So what I propose to do that I think that we should discuss is two, two things. One is to create a revised set of FARs, incorporating a sort of a step system for different sized lots. So this will make the FAR more effectively regulating very large lot sizes, which wasn't as important when in the first go around with the FAR, because we were, the concern was primarily with mansionization and certain zoning districts that were smaller lot sizes. But here, as we're transitioning to potentially using FAR as an incentive to encourage sustainable building practices, it becomes much more important and necessary to include the larger lot sizes. So that's what I've proposed here. And in this pink zone, so. Sorry, actually, in the yellow zone. So I'm proposing two sets of FAR formulas. One would be a revised set of FAR formulas that includes this step formula. And then there would be a second set of FAR formulas that would apply to a sustainable build. And you could have a larger, a larger build if you were doing a sustainable build. So it incentivizes builders towards using sustainable methods. And what, how we end up defining the sustainable build standard is going to be really important. And I haven't attempted to draft something here. I think that if we wanted to, we can discuss what the major components of that would be tonight. So I think just to comment a little bit about how I feel this would work. I think one aspect of using this stepwise formula, it's consistent with the way a lot of, with other towns that I looked at who are doing FAR, do it there also using step. It does create the difficulty of if you're falling on one side of a category versus the other, there's a big, there could be like a big difference in what you're allowed to do. Because you happen to fall on one side of the category versus the other side, that that's one issue with using the step formulas. I was talking to Matt Johnson about this and he gave me some, he had an alternative proposal that might address that. So I think we continue, we can continue to look at different ways to develop these formulas. Other towns like Lexington have FAR formulas that are extremely complicated. So, but we can continue to look at that. So yeah, I'm looking for feedback. I'm interested to know what you guys think about these step formulas and also the idea of bill of, of using this as a way to take a crack at baking an incentive for green zoning into the code.
Thank you, Kate. If I can just ask you a couple of questions at the get go and forgive me if you've already conveyed some of these things. So the idea of a sustainable build, I presume along with this, we would need to come around, come up with some standards and how we measure this, what a sustainable build is, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and the, the, I mean, it seems like the, was there anything guiding the, these, these gross floor areas or the living area and garage areas that you arrive at with these formulas of just in terms of the, the output of the formulas. So just to use an example, 10,800 feet for that 80,000 square foot lot. Is that, was there anything magic about those numbers?
It's, it's definitely not magical. What I did was I have the data on new builds from the past five years that I've been working with quite a bit over the past year. So I have that to kind of look at on these size lots, what is being built and what seems fair to make as a goal for one side or the other, both to, to be effective enough to actually incentivize somebody to do something different than what they would do otherwise, but also to be, not to be grossly unfair to folks who own properties. So yes, it's kind of a balance and I'd be interested to, I do need to go through and now that you're asking that question, maybe for the next presentation, I can go through and let you know, like in the past five years, how many homes were built that were over that, you know, over 10,000 or would fall, fall in between 10,000 and 12,000 or so. So it's a great question.
And if I make questions for Elizabeth, I should know this, but isn't the minimum lot size, it's 10,000. So would these be non-conforming in 5,000 or is there 5,000 square foot district?
There's no 5,000 square foot district.
Okay.
5,000 is the minimum lot size that somebody can create a lot if there was a structure on it prior to 1928 under zoning and subdivision control law.
Okay.
So.
And do you have a sense with, whether the ZBA is seeing many requests for variance from far, from the existing far requirements?
I think there's only been, I want to say three. And one was for bay window, one was for a dormer on a second, no, on the third story attic area. And I can't remember the third one, but it was along those lines. So there have not been any applications for structures where somebody came in and said, I just want to go over the floor area ratio.
That was my recollection too, is that, that it wasn't stopping anyone from building anything.
Or at least not, they were proposing under the far and not seeking to go above it. Yeah.
They were on much smaller lots as well.
Yeah, okay. Did any other board members have any questions or comments for, for Kate?
Um, I, I'm new here, so I'm, I'm getting up to speed with, with this sort of discussion, but when, I, I know in Lexington in particular, the discussions around mansionization have been, have been at that smaller size. You know, putting a very large house, very vertical on a small lot. Does the tweaking of the far standards to basically, would this actually, if this change was made, to your knowledge, would it have actually resulted in any change in, in what was built over the last couple of years? As opposed to, I know no one asked for exceptions or, or, but, but would this have actually impacted any houses that were built that neighbors didn't like, I guess is the question. Cause that, that's sort of a good frame of reference. If you're saying that that 200 square foot difference at the 10,000, the 10,000 square foot lot size would hit 10% of spec homes, then that might actually have like a significant impact in green development. But if you're saying it hits one and they, they were, you know, you know, it was on the cost anyway, it may not actually have the impact that you're looking for. So I just didn't know. I haven't seen any of the numbers. I don't know.
Andrew, I think it's, it's a really good question. If I can sort of maybe just rephrase it, you're, you're wondering, does the existing far ratio, is anybody bumping up to that such that anybody would be having, having a lower ratio plus a sustainability bonus, would, is that actually accomplishing the goals of working against mansionization? Yeah. Yeah, Elizabeth, I, I won't honestly only peek my head into a couple of ZBA meetings and it seems like the proposals I saw were quite close to the far max. But you know, they weren't asking for an extension, you know. Is there a sense as to whether the existing far limits are having the intended effect?
I don't think they're having the intended effect now.
Cause we're still, cause 3,800, or I'm just squinting at the number, 3,600 is still pretty big.
Yeah.
But I think what we're seeing is the 6,000 square foot homes because they're the larger lots and they can accommodate that based on our current bar.
Yeah.
So just, just to answer that question of, sorry, of what is the effect of FAR? And Burton, you alluded to the fact that if they're proposing it under the FAR, because they want to stay under the FAR, we don't know. But that doesn't come into us as a data point. I think what we can say is that before the FAR was implemented, there were the FAR that's, it's in effect now was implemented to take care of a certain set of homes that had been constructed in the five or 10 years leading up to that. So if we know that at least those types of homes were, were avoided. So there is some effective, like we can assume some effectiveness, even though it's, it's hard to count it per se. I don't know if that makes any sense, but I think when you look at the builds that were occurring before this was implemented and then going forward, there is a certain subset that was right at the top of really large homes on really small lots that, that were avoided by the implementation of the FAR. So did have some effectiveness, I think. And we can still keep going, which is I think what we want to do, but just, I just want to add that.
But I think, I think it's, I think it's been effective, more effective at the 10,000 square foot lot stage and then
For sure.
slowly getting, you know, maybe 15,000 square foot lot stage. Once you get to, you know, 20,000 square feet, it, it has no effect.
For sure. I completely agree. Yeah.
I think, yeah, I mean, we should pretty easily be able to just go back and look at the new construction sales in Zone C, you know, in West Concord or wherever, where it tends to be happening the most, pretty easily and see where the square footage has ended up. I always forget if, if the, the living area includes like the finished basement that like the, the below ground has always confused me, but I know looking at just like sales and what is on the market, like everybody is trying to boost their, their square footage that they're using, right? To make the dollar per square footage sale price lower or looking, but I'd never, I know that, I don't know if that's appropriate or not and, and what to count, but.
So I, I, I'm just curious if particularly at that 10,000 square foot lot size there, if this, if this is, you know, if this would be an effective means of achieving either goal. Because if you're starting right now, they could build up to 3,600 square feet of living area plus garage. The revised formula brings them down only 200 square feet. And then you're allowing them to build back up to the original amount at 3,600 square feet. If they do whatever is determined to be the sustainable build. But my question would be, one, is a builder gonna say, 200 square feet for the extra additional cost of building green may not be worth it. And two, the community is gonna say 200 feet difference, 200 square feet different house. Isn't really not mansion, not mansionization versus what was, you know, available before. So I worry that at that particular 10,000 square foot point, that maybe it's not going to achieve either goal.
And I think you, you brought this to our attention so we could discuss it and change the numbers if we could, but you're right, there's a fine line there between, you know, the limit being too small and then the incentive making it now too big.
So Kate, I don't know if it's helpful just to briefly show everybody the, the data table that you're working from.
Okay.
Just so they, just so they can understand. So, you know, this is, this is the data table that Kate's been working from as far as all of the square footage from, I think it's for the past five years, is that?
2016 through 2020. Yeah, it's five years. It's including 16 and 20. Um, yeah. I don't know if you, um, just to answer your question Haley, it doesn't include the basement, the way the FAR is calculated. It's, it's like the living area plus the garage. It does not include the, the basement.
But it includes any, anything that's over 68, excludes the basement, opened or screened porches and decks.
Um, so I'm just trying to find.
And so does this group, does this board think that there should be a maximum square footage? For like, rather than thinking about the ratio, are we thinking that there is a maximum square footage for that, the acreage?
I think we end up getting kind of stuck between choosing whether we want to prioritize working against the, you know, larger homes on smaller lots or prioritize, you know, the sustainable build. I worry like it's, it's very hard to have both as a goal without, you know, and achieve both of them, I think.
Well, if I had to choose one, um, right now, I think that it's thing to do is to go for green zoning because if we're just, it's very hard to limit. It's gonna be more difficult to just limit to lower the thresholds and an incentive is better than just lowering the thresholds. I think it's more doable. So that's, that's my perspective is to go for, and I hear you saying is to go for the green zoning. What do you guys think?
Is it appropriate to skew the numbers more aggressively towards the green? Like, you know, because you, you're basically, the numbers seem to say that the 10,000 square foot, you know, whatever's put there, people seem to be hitting it. You know, it's just, they're gonna get right around whatever number that is, they're gonna come in and come out. So you know, the marginal effort to make those homes green might not be worth it as opposed to really pushing. You know, when you're talking 1,000 square feet between a 7,000 and 8,000 square foot house, you know, that, that could be something that somebody who's in that price point would be willing to invest to get green to get that extra, because that's, that's almost 20% of the size of the house or 10% bad math. But, um, you know, then all of a sudden the green zoning might be worth it. You know, you have to have that incentive at the smaller sizes, but it really starts to pay off more at the green. So does it make sense to focus on that and basically say, you know, houses are getting bigger, you have to accept that people are gonna try to put bigger houses on small lots and try to push green zoning that way as, you know, more bang for your buck.
Or, I mean, that, I agree with everything, everything you just said, Andrew. I was, but I was also just thinking, do you sort of address the sustainable aspect by, by lowering whatever the FAR can be as a maximum to begin with? Because by the, but well, unless it's, you know, a house that is leaking like a sieve, a smaller home is going to be more economical to and more green by its nature than a house that is 20% larger than the same house sitting there. All of the things, you know, build quality being the same. So, you know, whatever the current amount for, again, let's just look at 10,000 or 20,000 square foot lot size, a home that's 3,600 or 6,000 square feet as currently built, a home that is 3,200 or 4,800 square feet is going to consume less energy to heat and cool. And, you know, potentially just use low, less energy overall. So I mean, the smaller FAR may address that in a different way than just incentivizing them to use green building techniques for a, a much larger building. And then that still addresses the mansionization.
Yeah, and we're gonna impact a lot more of the housing stock that we want to, which is that 10,000 square foot lot size. Like from my perspective, like the 40 and the 80, like, I mean, what, how many of those are actually getting built anymore? It's gotta be very, very few. And if, and if they are getting built, like, I don't know, it's kind of hopeless in my mind on those anyways, like, like. So it's just a lot bigger bang for your buck to address what we hear the most about, which is that, you know, what's going on in Zone C.
I, I think this also can be in combination, like this is, this is a great thing that the planning board can do, but we can also work with, you know, the comprehensive sustainable energy committee who's doing a lot of education in town. And, you know, if we can educate residents and homeowners about, you know, building what they need rather than building larger than what they need and then building, you know, smart for a number of reasons, including indoor air quality and things like that. Maybe in combination with, you know, the constraints that we're proposing, you know, everybody will be happier. I know unfortunately, this is really kind of a developer, you know, deal rather than your next door neighbor.
So Kate. Yeah, I'm getting two takeaways here, one of which is that we passed in a far and it's maybe not been as effective as was originally planned. And so it's, it's worthwhile to revisit the, the numbers that you, you come out to, the, the total caps. The other thing is I look at this, I really like is that this is, these are formulas you can plug in and somebody said, there's somebody really gonna go for, you know, the cost of a green building for 200 additional more square feet. I bet there's a pretty good formula you could come up with if you clearly define what sustainable build is, you know, in terms of requirements. Where a builder could look at it and say, this is going to cost me to meet these requirements, an additional, say, 5 to 10% in cost. And I use those numbers, I, I know talking with the builder of my home, which is extraordinarily energy efficient and, and I guess green. That the cost was probably in the range of 5 to 10% more fish expensive. And if you, if you can put a number on that and you multiply that times the bonus square feet you get times, you know, and then calculate this square footage sale price in Concord. You get some pretty, you quickly get to some pretty, a clear idea when it makes sense financially. Cause we know that it's really hard to be financial to have, to implement these green features. And so, you know, if you've got a million dollar home and it costs you an additional $75,000 to make it meet whatever the sustainable build standard is, then what is that? That's rough. I mean, right there that if it's $75,000, you have a $400 average selling price. You make $5,000 by making it green. I think if I just did the math correctly in the top of my head, because you, you can sell it for $80,000 more. I may have done the math wrong. I'm not a math person, but I, you know, so I think that that will really appeal to people that are trying to figure out what it is worthwhile to meet these standards. And we won't get sort of the hand waving of, well, we're considering, you know, we're making it solar ready or we're considering putting in heat pump. You know, I think that this will, people will look at this and say, there's a real bonus. And I think we have some room to play with because of the first point I said, which is when we don't have a lot of people bumping their heads into the existing far ratio. So I really like this idea of lowering the farm max under a standard formula and having a revised sustainable build that, that brings you up to higher number. I think we need to look closely at those, at, at that step formula in the 10,000 and 20,000 square foot lots to see what, what is actually being built today, because we don't want to make this punitive. Rather, we want to bring it down reasonably and maybe this isn't, you know, done in a single step, but bring it down reasonably and then incentivize that, that green building in a way that works in a spreadsheet and shows that it actually, you can actually make more money going, going bigger but green. I like it.
So at, at this point, trying to figure out how to help Kate move this along because I'm going to also put it out there. This is not my forte and Excel and I are not friends. So if there is another board member who on that math side that Burton was talking about, help her with finding what that, what that ratio is as far as cost and green zoning and how much you can sell it for. Also Kate, I know you spoke with Matt Johnson, who is a phenomenal math wizard and whether he might also be able to help you with coming up with that. But from what I'm hearing, there seems to be a general consensus with this stepped approach and a standard and sustainable build variation.
Yeah, I mean, Elizabeth, for me, I think to progress the conversation, what I would really like to know more about is in, is the, is how we would define sustainable build? Is there a standard that we can adopt? I mean, because I don't want to develop our own standard and maybe that's a, a conversation with a comprehensive the, the, the energy committee or, or, you know, and I don't want to say like passive house or something that nobody's gonna build to. But, you know, some standard that is, that the sort of the overhead on meeting it is, is not, is not that challenging. That it's understood to builders and then put a number on what that additional cost is as a percentage for square footage. And then I think we can, that'll really help guide us in what those bonus numbers should look like. And then the last piece of data I'd want to know is where are we really aiming in general in, in terms of pushing down the, the resulting, it's sort of the far, the, 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 the gross area, the gross living area, sorry. Across the, I think the three different lots, the lot sizes were really concerned about 10,000, 20,000 in that range. So.
Help if you, if you want, if you need help.
Great. I, I think in, you know, Elizabeth was calling it math and I think the most difficult part of the math is the data. I don't, I don't think it's not, so getting the data that we would need to try to understand, like what is the additional? I mean, we had to define sustainable build and figure out what the additional cost is per square foot on different types of homes. So I don't, I think that's, that's a lot. But yeah, I think this is great. I definitely think would have some direction to keep going with us. And yes, Glenda, I'll come back to it in a couple of weeks. It's really helpful.
Thank you, Kate, for putting all the time into this. I know this, this is a lot of work.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Can, can I add one potential direction to go on this? And that would be that as a, well, we could define what sustainable build would mean. Or we give the builders or developers, whatever sort of a à la carte menu of things that they can do to achieve different tiers of, of larger home up to the original living area that was previously allowed. So for example, Burton, you mentioned having heat pump. So heat pump, if you install the heat pump, you would get some percentage more. If you, if you didn't use any greenhouse, you know, any fossil fuels, you would get something else. If you had solar panels installed from the get go, not just solar ready, you would get some percentage up. Like I, I wonder if doing it that way so that, because there are different builders who think, oh, nobody wants this. Nobody's gonna buy because of this and they'll be turned off. If we define sustainable build to include all these different things, they'll never do it because they'll say, I don't like this. But if they can get just a taste, like, oh, okay, that's easy enough. I'll do that. And then they, it's not as expensive. It's not as big of a deal. People like it and they, they're like, okay, well, I'll do this on the next one to get a little bit more.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I know, I love it. I love it. And I, I think this, I think that's gonna be a really juicy conversation of how to define sustainable build. I think what you're suggesting, I, I like it, but it's too complicated. It's like how to, to figure out how much they're gonna get for each thing. But I, I think that you're getting to like how juicy that conversation is gonna be about it to find a saving build.
How Lexington, you said Lexington had a very complex one. If you can share that with us at some point.
And that, and by the way, Lexington has an FAR. They don't have a green build incentive. So it, um, but yeah, I will share it for sure.
And like at the end of the day, this is about meeting like greenhouse gas reductions targets, which is like by and large driven by going all electric. So I don't, I guess I'm missing something for why we're not all like acknowledging that like all electric versus not all electric is like the most obvious place to be, I guess. We already have a all electric builder in town, but that's already setting the standard.
I do think that's a big piece of it and it, maybe that goes away with home rule, but the home rule issue, but, um, yeah, no, I, I'm not dancing around that. I think that's a big piece of it. I'm not sure if that's the only piece. But I don't think we need to talk about that right now.
So I'm just gonna say two things before we move to your next item. One, because you're, you're, you can make this sustainable build standard, it, it's an option. So if, if somebody, if a builder wants to choose that option and to get that option is to go all electric, that's a choice they're making. You're not mandating that choice. So they have the standard build. They can, they can choose that and the town is not overstepping its authority into, you know, the state, state law. You, you have this, you have this alternative that is a choice. So you can do that. And that's probably the easiest thing you can do. And then you don't have to go through and, you know, define what sustainable build is and throw in different options. You know, define what sustainable build is and throw in different options. To Nathan's point, having different levels for different options for, you know. Whether it's standard or a sustainable build. The other side of what the planning board has to think about when you do put forth any type of zoning bylaw amendment amendment is. How it's going to be implemented by staff and and whether that's even possible. So that while it's it's not the main goal, it is something that. I will keep in the forefront of everybody's mind is that to similar to unfunded mandates. To implement something that then creates such an issue with town staff that it. It can't even be implemented, doesn't help us either. So I just throw that out there.
Thank you.
Saying and I'll shut up Burton. When we have North Hampton to, you know, use as our guiding star, right? Like, they've already done this in a lot of ways. So. Like, again, more we, the more we can just lift their language and people are open to that. And after they review it, like. They've done something similar, so.
They did an F A R incentive?
Not F A R, but they have an incentive mechanism related to you get more density if you're all electric. It's the same idea.
Just and when I said the Home Rule petition may make it go away, I just meant that if 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 Concord successfully petitions the state to. To prohibit the new fuel hookups, then this this becomes, if we're just making this about fossil fuel, then this becomes moot because. That that those hookups will be prohibited anyways. So I would say if this is just about that. Then I'm not sure if it's a good idea to invest time in it before we know what's happening with that Home Rule petition.
It's going to take years, so.
Oh, it will. I didn't realize that.
Well, but to to your point, Kate, sustainable build isn't just all electric. It's. Whether somebody limits the impervious coverage.
No, I I.
That's solar ready incorporates even even on a single family resident lot, some type of L I D measure. This is something that the the last. I'm going to say the last six months, the zoning board of appeals, when they review an application for a special permit to. Expand a dwelling greater than 50%, they are now requiring. Roof recharge. If there's a new, you know, long driveway, having recharge runoff for the, you know, the additional pavement. For, you know, for the impervious coverage. So, you know, they are taking steps as well. And 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 that's another, you know, another aspect.
Thank thanks, Elizabeth. And and I, just as a last. I at last comment, Haley, I I would be very appreciative if you looked at the what the North Hampton and and. Example and identified those things that, keeping in mind of what Elizabeth's comment about staff review. You know, those things that they've come up with that are incentives here. So that would be, I'm I'm imagining something like, yeah, yeah, the building inspector can easily. Determine whether it's gas or electric, but if there were, say, a third party standard that they were meeting where they had to bring us the certification in. You know, as part of that, you get getting their certificate of occupancy or something like that, that doesn't require. Somebody on town staff to build their own independent expertise as an energy, you know, surveyor or 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 auditor, I should say. Those things from North Hampton would be great. Now, with that said, it is 7:38. We are keeping our next applicants waiting. So if I could turn to the 7:30 agenda item, which is a site plan review of. The application of Concord Children's Center under section 11.8.7 of the zoning bylaw to convert the existing single family dwelling. To a childcare center with reduced parking, construct a 7,063 square foot addition and make related site improvements. Parking lot, subsurface stormwater drainage and landscaping at 250 Old Bedford Road. Now, we, this is obviously not our first meeting here. We're we're coming back for for with some changes, some additional comments from. In particular, the town engineering and are the outside. Peer reviewer on on some of the traffic stuff and with some new designs for the. For the parking lot. And I hope to that tonight we can sort of focus on those things and move through them. And and. When we open it up for public comment, we can also focus on the things that are new that we haven't previously received comment on. That would be great too, as we have many other agenda items to get through tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
I just.
Oh, I pardon me before I turn it over. Andrew, yes.
Yes, because of a potential conflict of interest due to my son attending CCC, I will be turning off my mic and camera. And not participating in any of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Apologize. All right. Now, if we can turn it over to the applicant, and I don't know if is is. Pat, if you're leading this or who is who's who's taking the charge and.
I'm the chairman.
Will be leading the charge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members. Good evening, Elizabeth. We appreciate the opportunity to come back before you. And we've been doing quite a bit of work. Our team has over the last several weeks in response to the comments that we've received from the town engineer. From the board itself and from the peer review engineer for the traffic. We will be presenting in order of their presentations, Molly from Stamsky McNary will be addressing the stormwater management. On-site circulation and the drop off and pickup. Ken Cram from Bayside Engineering, who is our traffic engineer, will respond to comments from the peer review traffic engineer. And lastly, Jennifer from Lemonbrook will be discussing and addressing the lighting levels as well as providing a brief update. Regarding the N R C. So with that, I would like to turn it this over to Molly.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. For the record, Molly Benner with Stamsky McNary. We last met with the planning board on May 4th, and since then, we've made revisions to the plan. In response to various department comments. As expressed, and I will just run through those comments. And I think Jennifer will be pulling up a slideshow. So I will just kick it off with. The engineering comments. There was a concern, Jennifer. Okay, so this is the original plan shown here. Originally, we had four parking spaces to the left of the entrance drive and two parallel parking spaces to the left of the exit drive. Engineering had a concern about the distance from the existing intersection of Virginia Road and Old Bedford Road to the exit drive. And requested that we move the exit drive as far west as we possibly could. So if you want to go to the next slide, this shows the revised layout of the parking lot. So we were able to move the exit drive as far west as possible. And we actually, in order to move it even further west, there is an existing set of stairs on the porch in the front. We are proposing to relocate those stairs to the side. And like I said, this this enabled us to push it even further west. Increasing that distance from the existing intersection significantly. Engineering has responded and said this comment has been addressed sufficiently. Additionally, moving that exit drive then allowed us to relocate one of the parking spaces. That was originally to the left of the entrance drive. And create another parallel parking space for a total of three parking spaces in that area. This allowed us to maintain the number of parking spaces originally proposed. And it also addressed a couple more concerns raised by engineering. One of which was originally the parking space closest to Virginia Road. There was a concern about the the car being in that parking space, not being able to back up. Out of that parking space without going over the right of way line and and onto the sidewalk. So relocating that space to the left of the exit drive allowed us to. Push the three parking spaces away from Virginia Road slightly. In order to make this parking space work and keep the car on the site as it's backing out. Additionally, this also allowed us to increase. So there was a concern also about whether or not there was enough room. For a garbage truck to maneuver in between the two spaces closest to the dumpster pad. So we were able to increase this distance. And ensure that a garbage truck will be able to get in and out without conflict to any of the parked cars in that in those spaces. And I will then go into just some other comments that have been addressed. And raised by engineering, one of which was to note and provide. Slowed granite curbing at the driveway locations to match the existing street cape. So we we've noted this on the plan. We've made that revision and engineering said this comment has been addressed efficiently. There's also a small portion of the town sidewalk that does fall within the property. And it was requested that we provide an easement for this portion of the sidewalk. So that has also been noted on the plan. We're showing an easement for that portion of the sidewalk for town. And this comment has been addressed sufficiently. We have provided sizing calculations for the level spreader. Which accommodates the outflow for the infiltration bed and the drywall. Engineering said this comment has been addressed sufficiently. Additionally, in between at the entrance drive, there wasn't originally an additional drain manhole in between the trench drain. And treatment unit. It was requested by engineering that. An additional deep sump structure be provided to. In ensure added treatment before entering the treatment unit. So this comment has also been addressed sufficiently. And another thing to note, a slight modification is. There wasn't originally an overflow from the roof drywall. The roof drywall is sized to. Retain and infiltrate the full volume of 100 year storm for the roof runoff. However, any storm in excess of 100 year storm is now allowed to overflow through that pipe and into the level spreader. And this comment has also been addressed sufficiently. And that brings me into some new comments that were brought up, one of which was in the town planners report. About low impact development and why it's not being utilized at this site. The point of low impact development is to reduce runoff by minimizing impervious cover. And detaining stormwater runoff close to its source. We are in fact actually doing both of those things. By reducing the parking to only what is needed for the project site. We are reducing the impervious area in that sense. And also the subsurface drainage structures are as close to the sources they can be. One of which is mitigating the parking lot runoff. Both of them are under the parking lot and. Within proximity of the source. And another, an L I D technique. Low impact development, L I D, is for surface drainage. So open drainage structures such as an infiltration basin. This was not used at this site. This is a childcare facility. And any open drainage structures are a significant child hazard and safety hazard. For children running around the site, hence why everything is subsurface and out of sight, which is is accommodates the safety for the children. And then there were some additional comments brought up by engineering, just a few remaining comments. Which were regarding the auto turn analysis for both the passenger space closest to Virginia Road. And the garbage truck. So Jennifer, you want to go to the next slide? Yep. So we had provided. A turning analysis for the space closest to Virginia Road as it had been revised. So as it's shown here. And. Engineering had a concern that, so we we were showing the car backing straight out of the space. And then cutting the wheel and then going through the site. Engineering had a concern that most cars backing out of a space cut the wheel as they're backing out. This is true. I do that myself, but you want to ensure that you're cutting the wheel at the appropriate moment as to not. Go into the adjacent parking space and hit the car next to it. So. The diagram you see on the left is showing the car cutting. Can't really see the colors very well, but the the line on the outside of the car, it's in blue. That is the vehicle body, the vehicle overhang. So that is shown right on that line. And this, this is while the the driver is cutting the wheel as much as they possibly can without going into the adjacent space. And then cutting the wheel enough to go through the site. And this analysis shows that the driver can still cut the wheel. And get out of that parking space while staying on the site. And an even more conservative visual is to the right, that diagram there. This is assuming that the parking space adjacent is completely empty and there's no cars there. So the car backing out of this space can. Immediately cut the wheel and back out of the space. While missing that curb, still backing out, going through the site with sufficient space without going into the right of way. So I believe that these diagrams, which we will provide with the revised plan set, address that concern. And then the next slide shows the garbage truck turning analysis. Originally, the garbage truck was going over the right of way in the initial analysis into that sidewalk area. It's just been revised to show that the garbage truck can actually back out onsite, fully onsite without going into the right of way. And still moving through the sites efficiently. And this brings me into a comment about. There there was some some talk about moving the entrance driveway to the left and relocating those parking spaces. Into to the right of the entrance drive. And that would mean relocating the utility pole. With these analysis, though, we would prefer not to move the utility pole. And we have also. Now proved that those concerns can be addressed without having to modify the parking lot. And then there is one more diagram. So this was. The last remaining concern from engineering that the passing lane essentially while cars are in queue. On the original diagram that was submitted with the revised plan set. Did show a passenger car crossing over the handicap accessible aisle slightly. This new analysis, this updated analysis shows that a car can pass the vehicles in queue. Without affecting that handicap aisle whatsoever and still bypassing those cars and making it through the site safely. And then that then brings me into, there's been a continued concern about. The logistics and and basically just the functionality of the parking lot during drop off and pickup times. And Lemonbrook has created several diagrams. That were submitted to the planning board. That essentially show a visual of how the parking layout will work during these pickup and drop off times. And. I will let Jennifer get more into that. So I will pass it over to Ken to discuss traffic.
And your your audio is coming through very strangely. You might, you might try turning off your, if you your video. Now, now give it a try. You, you sound a little like Mickey Mouse stuck in a computer. Is is that just for me or is anybody else here hearing a distorted audio as well?
I'm hearing that as well.
Ken, Ken, would it be possible for you to. Leave the meeting and then come right back in and see if that helps?
I wish we could understand the words, even at that pitch. That would be pretty amusing.
Okay, is that any better?
Much better. And probably turn your video back on if you want to.
Let's not push it.
Okay, very well.
All right, Ken Cram from Basin Engineering, we prepared the initial traffic study, which TEC performed a peer review on dated May 25th. Subsequently, we issued on June 29th responses to comments. And on July 6th, end of last week, they issued a comment letter. And basically, I believe all the issues have been addressed. In the, the comments that were raised, the first one primarily dealt with, according to mass DOT guidelines, whether or not the study area that we had chosen was adequate. Mass DOT recommends that any intersection that is going to experience a 5% or more increase in traffic volumes, that should be part of the study area. So obviously, without having traffic counts, you can't do that analysis. So we went out and we added two more intersections to the north Bedford Street and Old Bedford Road and to the south Lexington and Old Bedford Road. Jumping to the end of the statement, it turns out Old Bedford Road and Lexington Road experienced peak hour increases under the future build condition of 3.3% in the morning peak hour and 2.4%. So well below 5%. And Old Bedford Road and Bedford Street experienced a 5.1% increase in the morning peak hour and only a 3.6% increase during the weekday evening peak hour. But in any event, we, we did the full complete analysis for both intersections. We did the counts in June, I believe it was. We seasonally adjusted as appropriate. We visited the intersections, we performed inventory of the intersections. We performed the intersection capacity analyses. And as pointed out in TEC's second response to comments on that issue, they concurred with our findings. And although the delay does increase at Old Bedford Road, northbound at Bedford Street, it's because the VC ratio, volume to capacity, it's, it's close to one and it goes over one with the addition of the few trips that we generated. And what happens is because of the methodology, the delay calculation, it's a parabolic curve. It's not a straight line. So obviously, as you get above one, the delays increase, the calculated delays, I should say, increase parabolically. But, and I agree with TEC and their response. They say the, the level of service F that we is modeled is not likely to be fully experienced at all. Or so it's for such a short, short duration. Plus, the one thing that we did not take into account, it's really kind of hard to take into account, is that the intersection, Old Bedford Road flares and there's room for right turns to bypass vehicles waiting to make a left turn. So the, the overall operations, while may be constrained or modeled to be constrained, we concur that there is no appropriate mitigation for that location. They asked us to look at the evaluation of the site's entrance driveway, which we performed additional updated analyses. And we don't believe that there'll be any impacts due to queuing at that driveway because we have very little traffic that's approaching the road from, approaching the site from Virginia Road. Because one of the things that we did have when we did our trip distribution patterns in the original traffic study is we had zip code information throughout Concord for where these, these existing students are being combined into one facility, where they'll be coming from. Let's see, moving on. We talked about the additional traffic counts. We analyzed them. And TEC agreed with our methodology for increasing to adjust the June 2021 counts for the COVID pandemic. Anecdotally, since we're, we're now into July, for the most part, a lot of traffic volumes have come back to pre-pandemic levels in a lot of places. There are still several places that they have not, but my experience has shown me that we are seeing pre-pandemic levels again. See, what was, they asked the questions about the safety analyses, which we provided. And they concurred. They asked questions, we talked about the background growths that we used and they concurred with that. They concurred with the art, the trip generation methodology, the trip distribution pattern. And the unsignalized highway capacity analysis methodology, we had used the 2010 methodology. But now that there's the sixth edition of the Highway Capacity Manual as well, which supersedes the 2010 in some aspects. But the methodology for the unsignalized intersection capacity analyses remained unchanged. We reran all the analyses and we got the exact same numbers that we had originally provided in the original traffic study. See what here. They concur that the overall impact is not noticeable. And site distance measurements, they concur with the site distance measurements. And that sort of briefly summarizes and recaps their July 6th review of our June 29th responses.
Okay, thank you very much, Ken. Maybe it would make the, are you all, all done?
We've got one, one more. For now, I'll, I'll wrap this up really succinctly. My name is Jennifer Brooke. I'm from Lemonbrook. We're the landscape architects on the project. And what you're looking at now, I'm going to talk about three things before I wrap up. One is just the landscape and site plan adjustments that have come as a result of the adjustments that Molly spoke about. I want to give you a quick update on the conditions that were discussed at the NRC meeting that we had last week. And then some lighting concerns that not only NRC had wanted more information about, but also this, this board as well. So really quickly, this is an illustrative overlay of the drawings that Molly was showing you earlier. So the line work is essentially the same. You can see those three spaces up here on the north side of the drawing along the property line as opposed to four, which we were showing last time we presented to you. And what this does is it gives us a little more room here, as Molly was saying, next to the trash area, but it also gives us a little bit more room here for additional screening from Virginia Road, which we didn't have before. And there's room for another tree here. As we move around the site, you'll see down here, the existing farmhouse previously had stairs that came out here to the front. We had bike parking out here as well. The bike parking has been moved right over here. We'd like to upcycle some of the materials that are on the site now. There's a little pathway of cobblestones. Those are perfectly good. We'll be able to reuse those here. The stairs along the porch at the existing farmhouse have been shifted around to the side. And what that did is it let us pull this driveway, as Molly was saying, further south in this drawing along Old Bedford Road, giving us more room between the exit drive and Virginia Road. So we took advantage of this opportunity to add some planting in front of the building. This is our front yard facing Old Bedford Road. And we really wanted to, you know, settle in the building along this facade. So the, the NRC meeting that we had, the presentation that we made last, last week, there were a couple of conditions that were spoken about and are addressed here. And we will package this up and, and get that back to them. The first was, we, as you all know, we have a wetland along the south side of this drawing here, right along the property line. It's an existing, an old farming irrigation ditch that has now become habitat and has developed, we have wetland soils in here. There's a 25 foot back setback, 25 foot setback here. We had originally shown a fence that ran along Old Bedford Road and then turned in, inside here. The shape of the setback is a little, is interesting because the ditch is turned here. So the, the 25 foot setback runs actually along Old Bedford Road. So what we were asked to do is to remove that piece of fence. But for the interest of safety, we're putting back a vegetated barrier there, something, something that will not inspire children to, to wander through along here. So that's the first thing that we did. The second thing that we did is we talked about observing what is a no mo scenario for the, almost the entirety of the 25 foot setback, which you can see is a good 15, 17% of the property here. And what that would do is that would let us get not just two, but move beyond the compensation required for the encroachment mitigation into the 50 foot setback. So that is this entire area down here. You know, the CCC, if any of you know the facility, this will be a teaching resource and something that I think will fit right into the CCC's mission for nature-based play. The third thing that NRC was interested in was lighting. And I know that this board was also interested in that. So what you're seeing right now, and this is the last slide in our presentation, this is a photometric plan. When we added the, when we shifted the driveway south towards Old Bedford Road, and I say south on this drawing down, away from the Virginia Road intersection, it lengthened this side of the, of the parking area. And it necessitated the addition of one additional pole light so that we could achieve a level of light across the entire drive area. One of the things we, we did though, when we, when we added that is we reduced the height of the pole. Previously, they had been at 15 feet tall. We think a 12 foot tall light would work. The photometric plan shows us that it does, especially when we added the third light, which of course is much more congruent with the precedent of the residential neighborhood. So we are happy to, that we're able to get the pole height down to 12 feet. The other thing that we did was we took out one of the porch lights. These are recessed porch lights in the ceiling of the roof. There were three previously. And they were a bright spot. So we've just, we've taken, we've taken one out and now we have two in this location. Otherwise, the lighting levels and fixtures have not changed elsewhere on the property. So that does conclude our presentation for the time being. And we would be turning this over to you, Mr. Flint.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. I think the first thing before the board discussion, it would be nice to have the Towns Traffic Consultant Samuel Gregorio maybe respond to Ken's presentation or, and, or speak in to the memo we received.
Good, good evening, everybody. I don't sound like a mouse, right? My name is Sam Gregorio. I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer at TEC Engineering. We were hired by the town to peer review the work from Basin Engineering and the developer in terms of some of the onsite aspects of the transportation, the parking lot, et cetera. For the, for the general public, their knowledge, I work for the town, not the developer. So the comments and the information that comes from me is on behalf of the town, the engineering department and the planning department. I kind of briefly just want to go over some of the aspects of our comments. I know Ken from Bayside discussed some of those aspects. First, we, we did, we did ask the Basin Engineering to look at additional intersections. Ken had noted Massachusetts standard for any location that is affected by more than 5%, which was seen at Bedford Street and Old Bedford Road. In that sense, we generally agree with Basin Engineering that the level of traffic is not necessarily something that would be noticeable over the course of a peak hour. There is that increase that Ken had mentioned of the delay on Old Bedford Road during the weekday evening peak hour for the northbound approach. And again, similar to what he said, the rate of increase is parabolic where you add one car, when you add one more car, it gets even more quicker. Mostly because it's a stock control location. And it's already at a generally a capacity level, even without this project. In that sense, because it's at that level, the likelihood of, although that is generally, it's seen as the quickest way for certain vehicles to go based on whether you're using your general knowledge, when you put ways into your phone, whether you're using Google Earth or whatever you're using to find how you're traveling to and from places. I know I use it too. If there seemed to be a delay on that approach, people will find another way. They'll go south instead. So when Ken was alluding to that there's a likelihood of that never ever be experienced, that level of service. This is generally what TEC was agreeing to, is if there seem to be delay every day, commonly going north out of the site for a trip, they're generally going to turn left out of the site instead, go south and exit the site that way, go either towards Concord Center or back towards Lexington General, wherever they happen to be. So the level of delay that's shown in the analysis, most likely will never actually be experienced. In that sense, what the analysis did show is that the delay at the site is also conservative in the sense that there's parts of the analysis that are just generally over conservative, no matter where you are. And it assumes certain gaps between vehicles that someone is willing to take as they exit out of a site. The analysis is very conservative in that sense. And anybody, you know, drives around Massachusetts knows that it doesn't take a lot of of time between cars before someone steps on the gas and gets out as quick as possible. So one of the other aspects of that is, and again, Ken alluded to that as well, is the northbound approach to that intersection is pretty wide. There is a chance that someone could easily bypass as a right turn. That is not simulated in their analysis because directly it is a one-lane roadway. But the ability for someone to do that and the ability that people are already doing that shows that the delay is actually not as high as the analysis would show. In the sense of overall trip generation going in that direction, the site was showing, and I have the number somewhere in here, about, about 43 trips during that hour going north towards that intersection. So to put that in perspective, that's about one new car to the roadway every 80 seconds. So generally, since I started talking about three minutes ago, we're talking about maybe two cars. Perhaps a third is now new cars entering the network, something that's not even really noticeable. And this is where TEC is in that concurrence of the overall site is now projected to contribute a large amount of noticeable traffic to what's already on the roadway. The other things I wanted to bring up is I know there would be general concern about, obviously, there were traffic counts done in June of this year in COVID. TC does agree with how Bayside hasn't analyzed traffic volumes. So they grew the traffic volumes by about 22% that were done in June. That's based off of count stations that Massachusetts set up in the area on different roadways and taking comparison of the same volume on the day that the counts were done there. And then a similar count a few years back when COVID was not happening. And then adjusting in that format. So that's really where that adjustment factor comes in. So TC does agree with how they had done that. Overall, in terms of the other, the other location that was generally a partial concern was the intersection right outside the site, Virginia at Old Bedford. The analysis does show an increase of level of service, it's level of service C to D. Generally, a level of service D is already accept, generally acceptable level of service. Obviously, we still don't like to see when a level of service jumps itself. TC did note in its peer review that that level of service really only jumped because the initial level of service before the project, the no build condition was already at the threshold of C and D. So it only takes basically one car to jump over. One car not being a lot of new traffic to a row. That's the difference between a Tuesday and a Wednesday could be a dozen, two dozen cars already. Which is why we don't necessarily see that this particular site is causing or contributing something that would be detrimental to the roadway. In terms of certain recommendations that TC did put forward in that peer review, we did note that although that we do want the, a commitment as part, whether to condition or it's just a general commitment from the developer, to make sure that vegetation along the site front is just kept low, that's just to maintain the sightlines coming out of the driveways. Obviously, we plant things today, but you know, five years down the road, those have grown just to make sure they're maintained and kept under a level that allows that sightline, whether it's three and a half feet from a driver's eye in a car, to be able to see in and out, especially from obviously the exit driveway, but also around the entrance. You want to make sure that someone pulling into the driveway doesn't necessarily run into the car that is parked in that first parking space. That was discussed earlier. The other aspect was in terms of whether there would be discussion, this is out of TC's direct purview. It's really up to the town, but TC did provide a recommendation of the possibility of whether it's the town doing it themselves or the town looking for the developer to maybe assist in some way. Is the opportunity available to formalize a second lane on that northbound approach? That was discussed with that delay where it's already wide enough that would, it's basically the cost of striping in that sense. And maybe some small engineering in order to make sure, to figure out how far we can go with that striping. Obviously, it doesn't necessarily, it's something that you would want to maybe look at post occupancy. Because if it's not something that materializes, a delay doesn't actually materialize, it doesn't seem like a problem. You don't necessarily want to jump the gun and change a condition that's already there. But it is something that could be looked at in the future. TC did also have additional comments related to the site aspects. Most of them are generally comparable with the engineering department also put through. And from this point, I believe TC didn't have any new objection based on the edits that were made to the site that were discussed at the beginning of the presentation in terms of whether it's the garbage truck, the pickup and drop-off, general vehicle circulation, that first parking space, for instance, which are similar to the comments that TC had had as well. So at that point, I, again, TC is in general concurrent with B-side. Engineering did find and that the applicant does have in general for the site. Although I do look forward to have any, answer any question that may come my way as well from the general public. And also respond to anything that Ken may say in terms of his answers to the general public as well.
Thank you very much, Sam. Couple of questions. So the, you, you said formalized the, the lane on the northbound approach. It may potentially post occupancy. I, you glossed me a little bit on there. Which road is that on? You're talking about?
Sure. So, uh, Old Bedford Road northbound at Bedford Street. The roadway kind of slightly curves into the intersection, the stop controlled approach, northbound. The mouth of the roadway, because of that curve, opens up pretty wide.
Yeah.
So there's the opportunity that right now cars bypass, the right turning vehicles will bypass anybody waiting to turn left. Or they have that opportunity, the roadway is wide enough to do so. So there could be opportunity to, whether it's through striping or very, very, very minor widening, to formalize a second lane there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right turning vehicles coming off of Virginia Road onto Old Bedford.
Oh, no, no, no. Old Bedford Road northbound at Bedford Street.
Oh, at Bedford. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking.
Old Bedford is the stop sign, is the stop sign going northbound. And that little curve from the roadway hat there has opportunity that it's wide enough for a second car to buy, basically two cars to line up next to each other. So one, if someone's turning left, waiting at the stop sign, a right turn car could easily bypass him, turn right, turn right out, there's no, if there's a gap available. So the opportunity exists that if, this is somebody you'd want to look at post occupancy, because if the problem doesn't actually materialize after the site's built, then don't fix a problem that's not there. It's something that could be looked at, and whether that is again, whether it's a town project for, in just in general use, or if it's something that they want to work with the developer, I mean, that's not directly up to me. How mitigation gets done is between the town and the developer, but it's my recommendation that it gets looked at at least as an opportunity if delay does materialize in that approach.
Okay. And, and then Sam, for the, for the Lexington and, and Old Bedford Road intersection, and the, I guess it's Bedford Road and Old Bedford Road intersection. The, the increased traffic numbers, were those based upon the, the, the gross new numbers at this, at, at the site? Or is that net new numbers taking into account the existing use at the, at the Ripley School?
So it's based on yeah, it's based on gross numbers. So it's based on, they have a certain student population they expect at this location. The trip generation is based on that. There, it does not take into account that there are, some of these people are already on these roadways going to that other location that they will be rerouted to this one. So those cars are already on the roadway. So what they're showing is already overly conservative. And it goes back to, again, what Ken and both I was saying of the, the delay on some of these approaches are never going to materialize because we've shown something that's probably never happen. But we want to obviously show what could possibly be that worst-case scenario. And a lot of that, some of that is ten years down the road, the traffic will be different because the students will be in different locations.
Yeah.
That's part, it's part of that is that, that you want to look at that worst case as opposed to the subtracting out the existing use for someone's coming from the east right now, instead of going straight on Lexington Road, they'll turn right now onto Old Bedford to get to the new site.
All right.
You're already there now.
Okay. And my last question, you know, there's a, there was a lot of focus on that, that last parking space and backing it out. I think you looked at that and you had some, it, it looks like you said you think those turning radius, the, the turning radius analysis is okay, but probably not for a large family SUV type vehicle, right?
Yeah. I, I was thinking more of a pickup truck only because I have one and I'm thinking about out of parking spaces, which is not very easily, especially in tight locations. So I don't necessarily disagree that the car can get out of the space. My recommendation would generally be though, there's obviously so many parking spaces that you can find on the site, the site's not exactly big. I don't necessarily want them to change it further because we've already, they've already addressed the comment that I originally had in terms of that location. Yeah, I would suggest that that space becomes an employee spot. Because the employee is going to be not leaving the, during pickup and drop-off.
Okay.
You have to worry less about what could be happening in and out of the site. Uh, if that car is stationary in that position, because he was an employee who was already there, or he leaves later, after all the children have already left.
And, and did you do any analysis on that, on the trash truck turning, ready, backing out into the, onto the road?
Uh, we've gone with what they have shown. It's, we would be using the exact same software that they did to do that analysis. From what they've shown, we would have basically nothing different than what they've shown. And our only concern was, and I think I wrote it in the, sorry, let me just find the exact comment, just so I know, say it out loud. The, it's the garbage truck coming out the exit driveway, it is still, it's, they get through. It's not the issue, but it still is kind of tight. And if, let's say a car who's parked in that last spot is not parked perfectly in the parking space, no one ever does. Does the garbage truck potentially clip a mirror or something like that when he goes out? So our recommendation would be is, and again, this is how general conditions with how the town wants this to work, but if the garbage operations would possibly not happen during general timeframes when the parking would be full or, I mean, the hours of operations in terms of after, general after-hours or during normal operations, maybe how many students are there, how many people are parked? That's generally out of my direct purview. So applicants can know more about exactly who will be where, when. But if there's something that the garbage truck could come at a time where maybe that spot is not likely to be occupied, to be less yet, or whether it's off-hours, which is, brings up its other, obviously, problems.
Yeah.
Coming at night, and I understand that. So you want it to still be during the day, but you just want to make sure that it's time that basically the least amount of parking is on site.
Right.
That's, that's probably outside of pickup and drop-off.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, does any, any other members of the board have any questions for the applicant or, or for Elizabeth? Or Elizabeth, is, is there any comments that you wanted to weigh in with, to clarify any points in your, in your memo of today?
One question I had was in regards to the lowering of the height of the parking lot lights. Does that height take into consideration the height of any base for the light fixture? Is that from grade to top a height?
Elizabeth, I'm, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure. Ideally, that it's a, it's a measurement from the ground to the fixture, the fixture lens. That's, that's how we would like to see that measured. The, the lights in this case, I think are, are set back enough that we don't need a heavy base. Typically, the base is really meant to keep, keep people from like running over the lights. There's only three in this case. And so, so we'd like to keep that, those, those fixtures as low as possible. Having three gives us a little bit more flexibility and something I failed to mention. You know, the, the temperature of the light is a twenty-seven hundred Kelvin light, which is on the really warm amber side of lighting. So, you know, it, it's just something that's more friendly to, to vegetation, which can be interrupted by bright light as well as wildlife. So we'd like to see that measured from the ground to the lens.
Do you know how far back the light poles will be from the edge of the parking lot?
I'll show you.
So my reason being is that the board has run into instances where this question was not specifically asked. And there's a, there's a place right across the street from my office where the lights were not set back far enough. And because of snow plowing, they then put in two fairly large steel poles in the parking space at the curb line to protect the light fixture. So
bollards, they're ugly, they end up getting painted yellow so that people see them, especially snowplows. So we have a, we have a fence, a low fence. It's meant to cut off the view of the cars from Virginia Road and any headlights in the very early evenings of say December and January, when it does get dark around four o'clock. And there's planting on the backside. That fence is inbound of the property line. So it would be wise not to have the fence and the poles intersect. So we would, we would just put the, I think we can say that we would put the poles behind the fence so that they're, they're not, they're not in the way of, of the front bumpers of any vehicle, if that makes sense. I can share my screen really quickly here.
That's, that's okay. That's, that was my question.
Okay.
And then Burton, your other comment, was there anything else in my report?
Anything you wanted to clarify from your memo or any, or any other comments?
No, I'll, I'll let the rest of the board go through and I'll go through my report and see what, if anything is outstanding.
All right. Thank you. So for the rest of the board, does anybody have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I have one, Burton.
Yes, Kate, please.
But this is for the traffic engineers. So maybe I can ask Samuel first, and I don't know if Ken Cram has, has something. Is, is this kind of a general question? If you could help me out as a member of the planning board who reviews this and other projects. Sometimes it, it seems like with the traffic volumes, the counts that are done and the effort and expenses is invested in doing those traffic counts. Sometimes it seems like if there's no impact on level of service, then that's the argument, that there's no effect at a level of service. And then there, if there is an impact, it feels like the argument is, well, you are already right at the threshold and now you're just over onto the other side of the threshold. So could you just give us some advice on, I guess, the utility of a level of service or when we should be concerned about a level of service impact? Like, is there only really a concern with where it gets to F? Or is it, is it more just that, like, the, the real purpose of doing traffic counts is to make sure, I don't know, that you, that there's, that you don't trip into some situation where the state requires you to signalize the intersection or something like that? Like, how do we assess, how do we? Maybe, maybe the question is just, what's the utility of level of service? Like, isn't the level of service D bad?
Yeah, I know where you're going. So I'll go first before Ken may jump in. So for those who, who don't know, level of service is graded on an A to F scale. And I will warn that, that is not meant to be equivalent to what you would get in school. So F, yes, is not great, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the intersection is failing. If you went to Boston, every intersection is level of service F. If you go to Chelmsford, every intersection is level of service F, that's operating with a stop signs. Signals maybe a little less. If the nature of a stop-controlled approach on a mainline roadway, similar to, again, what we're seeing at Old Boston Road in Bedford Street, the stop sign approach is generally in Massachusetts at a level of service E or above, so E or F, which is an elevated degraded level of service in some cases. It is based directly off of the amount of delay that a vehicle will, will see on average as they approach. So if you can picture, I'm trying to think of a a, a location that's really, really bad in, in the area, but I, I guess the best opportunity, what I would have is say like, which close but really bad. If you're thinking like in Lexington, Hartwell Ave at Route Four. Everybody knows the area, it's not that far away. Every approach to there is probably operating at like a level of service F. It doesn't necessarily operate bad for most of the day, it operates bad for one hour a day, maybe two. My wife will say all day because she works at Lincoln Labs, so. In that sense, delay doesn't necessarily mean so much in this area around Boston, because everything is already over capacity. Everything has a lot of delay around here because the roadways are narrow, buildings are at the back of sidewalk, you can't add lanes, et cetera. So what we generally like to do is we actually don't necessarily look directly at delay, most of the time we look at what we had mentioned before, the, the volume to capacity ratio, where are we in terms of capacity? So where we had talked about earlier that one of the approaches was at the threshold of level of service C and D, but the VC ratio is well below one. So one being where volume is equal to capacity, that's the start of real congestion. If you're well below one, you can add cars and you're really not going to notice any, any difference. Old Bedford Road northbound has that VC ratio that just jumped, is basically at one now, or what, will be at one a couple of years from now with general background growth. And that adding us even just a small number of cars to that has a jump well above. Again, because once you get to that point, it grows exponentially at that point. Parabolic. So in terms of what you can do to mitigate that, obviously, we can look at things like, you know, traffic signals or roundabouts. The, the issue there would be is, there's not, there's still one, even though we've adding traffic to Old Bedford Road in this case. Now you keep using this intersection as the example, because it's the one that's right there. A traffic signal would never be warranted at that location, there's not enough cars. Not only just during that peak hour, but outside of those two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, where everybody's commuting and generally using, you know, the Lexington Street, et cetera. Outside of those hours, there's never going to be enough cars on Old Bedford Road to warrant a signal. And a signal is, has to meet certain volume warrants and/or other type warrants, safety, certain amount of crashes, thresholds. And that's a regulation by federal highway, that's not a Massachusetts standard, it's not a town square, that's a federal standard. And that's to make sure that the signal here is the same as the signal that you see in the middle of Kansas, is the same as the signal in the middle of Seattle and Washington. Just so everybody always sees the same thing and they hopefully drive through it the same way. Because the number one rule we try to keep is that we don't want to violate driver expectancy. So if a signal goes in in a place that is not warranted, there's more likely to actually be crashes because people are going to drive through, speed through, because they don't understand why it's there. It doesn't make sense. Because maybe you get a red light when there's no other cars around and people don't understand why. So if you don't warrant it, which this location wouldn't, there's others, again, we could do something like a roundabout, for instance, but a roundabout with that kind of money involved and the amount of space involved isn't necessarily reasonable for the amount of, the little amount of traffic comparatively that this site would be adding. Again, we noted that there's about forty or forty or so cars in that weekday evening peak hour that head that direction. It's about one new car every eighty seconds or so. Generally not even noticeable if you're just standing next to the roadway. You would never notice one new car every eighty seconds. It would just look like the difference between a Tuesday and a Wednesday.
Samuel, I'm sorry, I think I got us off track by mentioning a signal. But your, your first part of your response was really addressing my concern. So thank you. That was really helpful. Burton, I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yeah, I got a question, Burton.
Yes, thanks, Emily.
I'm just in reading Elizabeth's report and the sustainability section updates especially. Was just curious what the kind of timing was on, looked like the applicant was getting quotes for all electric. And maybe solar, that's obviously over and above admirable, but you know, now especially that our, I think we have a gap in our director of sustainability role here. You know, don't know who you'll be working with on that with some back and forth, but just was curious if there was an update since some materials were submitted.
Can someone from the applicant, I don't know if that is.
Sure, Mr. Flint, this is John Emeral for the applicant. We are working with, excuse me, a couple of GCs that we have had extensive experience with. We're not into yet any bidding phases, but they are gathering information. And one of the things that is being looked at from a cost perspective is the all electric. I would expect that sometime by the end of August, we'll have some numbers there. It is something that the school, it fits in well with with their mission also. And so that we are taking very seriously. And Emily, we we expect that by the end of August, we should have some of that information that will help us to be able to make that that informed decision.
Yeah, just as far as like other incentives, if they even exist, I mean, I know now that Kate is gone. Is there somebody like at CMLP that is a good point of contact for you to get you guys to work with or?
It would be great if there would be, if if we can get a recommendation. We also do have currently working on on the plans is a electrical engineer. And part of the services they provide are to inform their clients, in this case the school, about those types of initiatives and how we may be able to benefit and and make this more of a reality. But if if Elizabeth or somebody is able to identify an individual at Concom Municipal Light that perhaps can help us or at least provide some some guidance there, we would be very happy to speak with them.
I'll be happy to forward you her contact info.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'd be great, Elizabeth. And I just would say that we have a pretty broad network in town and we have started to reach out to those alumni of the school and friends of the school who are particularly dedicated and interested in sustainability. I'll just say from my perspective, I don't know how you could build a school for small children without taking into account climate and and sustainability. So that is something that we believe will be able to find expertise to assist us with this and and hopefully some funding.
Great. Just one final topic on sustainability. Elizabeth, I don't know if this falls more under NRC and I haven't, I know it sounds like they gave their sign off on on things maybe this week or last week. But I saw the reference to only using native plantings in the summary and just want to understand, is that like a understood like, you know, guarantee? Or is that is that end up being a condition? Or how has that been considered either by NRC? Or would that would that or could that be a condition under the planning board?
So it roughly becomes a condition in two two ways. Part of the planning board's decision, should you move to approve it, that decision will specifically reference the landscape plan as part of that approval. And as part of my job in the conditions is prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, I am required to go out there and review all the landscaping, hardscape, fencing, light fixtures, all of those items. And it would also be reflected in the Natural Resources Commission's Order of Conditions. The plan would be referenced and Delia Kay, the Natural Resources Director, would do the same inspection of all of the plantings within their jurisdiction. So it is it is definitely verified twice.
Okay.
Although I will admit, I will be bringing somebody with me, probably I'll go with Delia because I I don't know the difference between.
You don't know your native plants? All right, thank you.
Although I do know the Latin term for California oak tree, so.
Any other board members?
So Burton, you asked me, so I do have just a couple of items from my report. One was.
I can just pause you there because I I was sort of saving my questions a little bit and I may be hitting on some of your things from the report. I really want to take a closer look at this whole, the the parking and the trash truck conflict with the three parking spaces and where the where the parking space is located. And Elizabeth, you raised in your memo that it was identified as a significant safety concern. And what I'm, what I, and I'm curious is if this suggestion that if you could move the Verizon pole and move over the three parking spaces, that that could alleviate it because the trash truck would no longer need to back out. We don't have a diagram of what that would look like, but could maybe Elizabeth, if you, I presume you've talked about it with a town engineer in it? Or what that would, how that would change things?
So in my conversations with the assistant town engineer, by moving the driveway over, it would be a straight pull in for the garbage truck to pull straight in to the dumpster and be able to just back out. And then to make that turning movement and that distance would be longer for the truck than where it's currently located because you could shift it over and.
How is it? I'm imagining if you're going in at some something of an angle, going from the existing where it's shown on the on this plan we saw tonight, going towards sort of the corner of the parking lot, that that seems like sort of a hypotenuse. Whereas if you're moving the entrance to the east, I guess that is a long, right? Then that that seems like a shorter line actually to where the trash facility would be located.
So let me. So again, this was the conversation with the assistant town engineer. If if the driveway were over in this area, then this dumpster could be moved. So it would be straight and and not at this angle. And then the truck would be able to back to here. And then and then have the ability to make that turn.
Okay. I've heard in other contexts, moving a, you know, one of the things that's held up the undergrounding project around town is the inability for our, you know, telecommunications providers to work nicely with the town. Is it how reasonable of a request is it to get Verizon to move a pole that has their wire on it?
If if it were a pole where CMLP Comcast and Verizon were on it, each having connection services to a structure, it prob, I would say nearly impossible. Because this is just a single pole with just Verizon and no connections to it. There's a higher likelihood, but I can't speak to the timing of how long that takes. So if and then I do understand that that is a time and expense that I can't tell you what either would be. So if the consulting engineer is able to review the revised drawings and it shows that that maneuver can be done without backing over the public sidewalk, then I feel that that addresses the issue raised by the assistant town engineer. I would agree that those three spaces along that eastern property boundary line should be reserved for staff for the school, which is what the applicant has documented in the various parking diagrams that show the staff arrival and children pickup and the queuing line. Based on the consulting engineer Sam's comment, I would also agree that the scheduling of trash pickup should not be done between twelve thirty and three thirty, which is the when the parking lot is full. There are cars during that time, some of that time period queuing, and there's also the bus pickup at three thirty.
Maybe then I I'd put that to to John or or Pat, to John Ameral or Pat Nelson. Does that seem like a reasonable request to you? I mean, I would add that those three spaces should be staff and maybe designated to small car parking for what it's worth so that you don't get, you know, the expeditions and things like that parking in those spaces, which even if they weren't maneuvering, might make it more of a challenge for a trash truck. And and also with respect to timing of trash pickup, I would, I would, as as the, as Sam said, the engineer, I certainly wouldn't want to see that pushed to before the school starts, which I know is early and and trash trucks, of course, deep when they back up very loudly. Or into the evening hours, have you thought about having a schedule for trash pickup? And when that would best fit in with your pickup and drop off during the hours of which people are awake and not as irritated by loud trucks?
Pat, if I could address that latter part of the question and Burton, the arranging a pickup time that that aligns with the off-peak times in terms of the number of people parked, cars parked on the site is not an issue. And we can avoid, you know, the pre-opening hours and certainly the after-school hours because again, we want to be very considerate of the neighborhood. But these companies, and we we run into this at at other projects, whether it's medical or childcare or residential, and they're happy to accommodate that. And so I'm sure that that the school can work that out, that we can work that out with the provider of that service. And and Pat, I certainly would defer to you on the staff parking there, although it is something that that we have expressed, you know, absolute cooperation on. But if you could perhaps touch on that again in those three spaces.
I can, yeah, that is not a problem either and we can designate that with signage and have it established that that's where staff park. Just anecdotally, my staff don't drive a lot of really large vehicles. They do drive some vans because some, many of them have children, but we do have a lot of compact cars in the parking lot from our staff. But you're not going to see a lot of really huge Suburbans.
Okay, okay, I'm wondering if you would be, I mean, certainly that one one space where there is a focus on the turning radius. It it seems if there, if a lot of people are already in in smaller cars, then maybe we, that could be designated a small, small spot or a small car parking. I was something I raised before, Pat, was it's off your property, but the the crosswalk to get across Old Bedford Road, I presume there might be opportunities for the students at CCC to go back to the the play scape at Ripley or you'll have teachers crossing and people in the neighborhood. In prior public comments, we specifically heard said it's already a challenge to cross there. And the idea of maybe providing funding for a a sign like we're seeing on Bruce Freeman, which are are, I think, really effective at causing traffic to stop for that. Have you given more thought to that or?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I I think we indicated in our response to the town that we would be more than willing to work with the town on looking into the feasibility of that and and how we could collaborate on that.
Okay. If there are no other board questions or Elizabeth, if you have any comments, otherwise I'd like to put it up for new comments from the public unless you've got anything, Elizabeth.
The only other items was from my report, the discussing whether having a painted queuing aisle in the parking lot, similar to what the Shover Brook School does, if that. And maybe I throw that out to Sam and Ken, whether that would help align the vehicles to allow for the queuing and the bypass and whether that could help facilitate the flow of vehicles in the parking lot.
Let's see, Sam's still with us, Sam, is that's an idea you endorse? For 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 segregating the 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 parallel parking for pickup from the flow-through parking?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a I'm a kind of half-half on it. And I only say that because and it's the nature of where we are in Massachusetts where, you know, plows destroy paint and stuff like that on roadways. It becomes a very high cost when you have to just keep doing it over and over again every year. Recoloring or whatever, however, I don't know which particular, I can't think of how Nishova has it in there for, if it's just colored, if it's like stamped in. But I mean, there's things that you could do to reinforce it, maybe just not paint, but like, so I don't necessarily disagree with doing something like that. Things like paint become a challenge because it becomes a yearly cost to just repaint everything over and over again just because of plowing, snow, constant, especially locations like this, where you're going to have cars stopping, going. Probably similar to what Nishova has it, so. I I guess maybe if the town has any better idea of how that's been working over there in terms of what they do for maintenance, how much they had to put in in terms of funding to redo that. I mean, paints, paint itself is not cheap, is pretty cheap at the, you know, getting that labor and the materials there to get there or the other vehicles and maybe put it down, get some money.
So so but the concept is okay, you just question the cost. Elizabeth, my thought is, I mean, this is going to be a busy parking lot, you've got a crosswalk, a striping that's going to be need to be maintained. You have a a user base that the teachers are there for a long time, but families are generally with CCC. There's a lot of turnover, you know, every, you know, you're there for three years or so. It seems like this is going to be something that there's going to need to be a lot of signage and direction within the parking lot. And that that's that's sort of goes along with the cost of of having a a small, very highly used space for for getting the, for having a pickup zone.
Which is fine, I just I just put it out there. And in regards to the Sam's comment regarding the right turn lane at Old Bedford and Bedford Street, that's just something that I would have to speak to engineering about. But as he noted, that would be something to be investigated after a certificate of occupancy is issued.
Right.
But it may be something that, given the current level of service, it may be something that they have already looked at and have in their capital plan already. So that's just a question I'll have to ask Engineering Division.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. I'm very aware of the time that it's already almost eight fifty-five. We do need to get public comment and because we do have a number, we have a public hearing yet to come and and some other agenda items this evening. So what I would ask again as a reminder is we we've we have received a great deal of written comments, which I certainly have been through all except just the last comments received today. And we also received input on in in prior meetings. So we could focus on the new things which were new information proposed tonight or new comments that have not been previously made. I I'm sure everybody would be grateful, though of course, you know, raise any issues that are pertinent. So with that, if you'd like to make a comment, you can do so by clicking the raise hand button. Or if you are dialed in via telephone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. So with that.
Raise hand button.
Okay. I will start with Mr. Levin. I see your hand is raised. Elizabeth, do I need to do the unmuting or? Can you do that?
He should be able to unmute himself.
Okay. Mr. Levin?
There we go. All right. There are too many icons that say.
There we go. All right. There are too many icons that say unmute on them, so my uh. Technically challenged here now that I'm retired. Uh, anyhow, David Levin, Kenny Lane, uh, so I'm down the road. Uh, CCC is well liked. Uh, but my concern continues to be um, the traffic reports. I think that Sam and um. Ken did a great job. I think Kate asked the question, but didn't go far enough. So I don't know if I need to ask Sam or or Ken this, but if we look at the site plan. Uh, we have an entrance uh, that's in the direction. I guess it's north of the uh, exit, which means it takes about eight cars to have a deadly embrace there. If someone doesn't pull into the part into the parking lot fully, blocks the. Eastbound Virginia Road. They will stop the traffic turning right off of Old Bedford. Eight cars later, nobody can get out of this property. Um, and it's a deadly embrace. And I I didn't hear. Uh, the statistical analysis, oh, that's an average of one car every eighty seconds. No. There are particular times when a lot of people will show up at the same time, even though uh, CCC will ask the parents. To to spread out. My kid doesn't understand that. He's not, or she's not gonna wait. I can easily miss my slot. And now we have eight cars that are in a deadly embrace. Cause you can't get into the parking lot because uh, people are waiting and they can't get out because the traffic that should be. Uh, moving along can't. Uh, and I I didn't hear that addressed. Um, it's Sam's analysis. I it was hinted at it's in Sam's analysis the first time, but it didn't get raised now. Kate hit on it a bit tonight, but that's left undone. And this is, this is a spot, as you said, Sam, that. Twenty-three, actually, I guess you're saying twenty-two hours a day, there's not a car there, but for two hours in the morning. It is um, heck or hell, hell with it. Um, and this is an intersection on top of an intersection. And I I, Sam, if you could address it, I'll shut up.
Or, um, and and thanks, if you, we'll, we'll collect questions and then um, from from folks. And then I'll I'll ask Sam at the end to to address them as they come up. Um, I, Mr. Follander, if you, if you'd like to have the next comment, please.
Hi, uh, Richard Follender, three ninety-nine Old Bedford Road. Um, I I support the uh, Children's Center making this move. I do want to. Uh, react to the comments about the intersection of Old Bedford and Bedford Street. I live right near there. Uh, that intersection is sort of two lanes. I've been told by the town safety officer that it's not supposed to be two lanes. It's not safe when there are two cars there. You can't make the left-hand turn and see what's coming at you from Bedford. So I just want to ensure that um, I I I understand what you said, that this isn't something that's imminent to happen. But before it would happen, I I urge Elizabeth and the engineering department to. Perhaps speak to the immediate neighbors before making a change to increase the traffic volume. One of my concerns is that with this project is that if this could be an opportunity to. You know, calm down the traffic and by increasing the volume of that intersection would be doing the opposite. So. Just because I heard that tonight, I just want to put put my pitch in that nothing be done until uh. With that intersection in terms of increasing the volume without at least contacting neighbors. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Follander. Um, uh, the next raised hand, Mr. Riley, Michael Riley.
Hi there, Mike Riley, ninety-three Kenny Lane. Um, my my concerns with this. Is, and it it kills me, the start of this meeting was the discussion of the FAR. But yes, the size of this property, it it's tripling. And the hardscape that it's taking over, what it's covering up on that land. It it's just too much for this neighborhood. It it's, we are not a commercial area. This is a residential area. We moved here for it to be residential. The thought of having a school parked right at the corner of my street. With people coming and going with their kids, me trying to get out with my kids to get them to school, them trying to catch the school bus. I think there's a lot more to that at this section. It's gonna be an issue adding this school there. And I mean, I I get the schools are great. They've done great things with the town. They help out. That location for it, it's like trying to shoehorn ten pounds of junk into a one-pound bag. Between the parking lot, these people are gonna have to drive perfectly with a garbage truck. The people going through trying to jump the lane to get out ahead of people because their kids already gotten out of the car. Look at the size of that parking lot and lines they drew. There's not a lot of difference on space. For somebody going by with that car, they're gonna have to be perfect every time, or they're gonna hit stuff. Once you have an accident in that parking lot, that's gonna stop everything. There'll be no traffic in and out while everybody passes their paperwork. These people are coming in to drop off their kids. Anybody who's had kids and dropped them off anywhere knows what it's like trying to get your kid out of a car. You gotta make sure they have all this stuff and everything's going and your mind is racing. And when you're leaving there, what are people thinking of? I gotta get to work. How am I gonna get there? There, there's not enough room for error there. It's just plain and simple. And yeah, I I don't want to see one of my kids get hit trying to wait for the school bus because somebody's not paying attention. Because they turned around to answer their kid and didn't see the car trying to pull in. This is just dangerous. And yeah, uh, it going to jumping on the traffic flow. Yeah, that's a big deal out here. We moved out here to be away from that. So yes, the size of that property that they're trying to put in is not gonna fit with the neighborhood. That that thing will be monstrosity compared to the houses around it. And that's what I got to say on it. And I prefer that it not be changed from a residential. I prefer it stay a residential property. I don't want to see a commercial. I don't want to see this issue. Uh, residential, a family living in there, we would not have this issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Riley. Um, I believe that the next hand I see up is uh, Sam Nagler. Nagler?
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Um, I'm, I sent you a lengthy email, uh, I guess la- last night. And um, it's all on the issue of the number of parking spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So I would just ask everyone to read it. I'm not gonna bore you with, you know, citing. Six pretty dry pages of uh, argument on the number of parking spaces. But I will say briefly that I was a real estate attorney for thirty-seven years, so I retired a few years ago. I've seen a fair number of zoning code provisions, and this is a pretty unusual one in that. It allows for relief from the number of parking spaces, but it, unlike any other provision I've ever seen. The first thing it does is it. Requires the applicant to have the right reason for seeking the relief. And if they don't have the right reason, they can't get the relief. It's a gatekeeping issue. Uh, it's very, the language is very specific. It can't be for an increase in enrollment. It must be for improved site utilization and. Uh, I don't see how you can have a hearing on this without getting into that. Because it's, it's built right into the sta- into the uh, zoning code provision. And the other way, and and so I, in my email, which I won't again. Um, repeat because I'm really hoping you'll read it. Uh, I get into why I do not think they pass that threshold issue. If they don't. There's no waiver and they have to have thirty-three parking spaces. Um, the second way it's unusual is. A typical provisional will say, you know, you you can go for this relief. And you ask the the number you think is appropriate and we'll decide whether we can give it to you or not. Here, even if they're entitled to relief, there's a specific minimum. There's a minimum number of spaces and. It's seems very clear to me that you add two numbers together. The first is the number of employees and teachers, and that I think everyone would agree is twenty. And the second is, uh, you know, it it's the language in there about the. Um, maximum drop off and pickup numbers for children. And in the. Absent a waiver is perfectly clear. You have to have those two numbers together, plus the one for the visitor space. Uh, in nineteen ninety-two, the all-street parking regulation was first put into the zoning code. And it's, that language is absolutely clear that you need to have the numbers. The nineteen ninety-four, the present version was put into effect. And it is absolutely clear that in the warrant. Um, for the town meeting, you have to add the two numbers. Then the planning board met, made some changes. The minutes of the planning board meeting. Said nothing about changing that formula. They basically put in the requirements for the um, prerequisites for the. Reduction, which I just talked about. Nothing about, oh, now you don't have to have those two numbers together. And if you do have to have those two numbers together, the first number is twenty. And for it to, this waiver to make sense, the second number had to be zero. And I don't see how it could possibly be zero. So, uh, you know, again, um, I go into this in. Probably too much detail, but a lot of detail in the um, in my email. And I just ask you to look at it and. If you think there's some credibility to it, which I hope you do, it's a legal issue. Um, and if you go run it by town council or um. Whoever you feel appropriate, but um. Again, I I don't see how you get to twenty spaces. Just from the literal language of the ordinance.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I I will, uh, I I I will, and I'm sure all the other board members will, women who have not already read your. Uh, your, your letter, we'll be reading that. You you're saying that relief may be granted. Only to to, for purposes of improving site utilization, but not to increase permitted enrollment. And here where it's a new facility, can you give me your thoughts on how that that plays into it?
Well, I I get into that in the email, but.
Okay, all right.
Really, you have to, you have to compare it to something. Or you have to say this prerequisite doesn't apply at all ever to any kind of new construction and only to additions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which doesn't really make sense either, because the um, new construction is obviously more intensive use. So if you're gonna have a precondition, you would think it happened for the new construction.
Okay.
And so, yeah, uh, I think you have to compare it to something. What I would compare it to is the Ripley program. It's point three miles away and um, you know, now for the first time they're combining it with the Emerson facility. That's an increase.
Okay.
And and there is. If you look back at the minutes, what were they talking about about the site improvement? It's mostly, I think they really have to show that. Were it not for uh. This project, where, I'm sorry, where. That the. Additional green space. Is the re- is the kind of one and only reason that they need the reduction in parking and that they really could have put in. Thirty-three space, parking space, parking lot, but. They're reducing it solely for the green spaces. I I say it more clearly at my.
Okay.
But uh, if you could look at that and appreciate.
I absolutely will. I appreciate your input.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Amaral, uh. Go ahead.
It was, it was more a question about procedure. Um, at at what point do we have an opportunity to uh, respond to Mr. Nagler's comments?
Yeah, I I I'd like to hold question. We've already got one question for the traffic engineer. I'd like to hold those just so we can get through the public comment. To make sure everybody has a chance and then we'll try to quickly, maybe because you might be able to address more than one comment in a go. Um, so if I could, uh, Mr. Doherty, you've got your hand raised, please.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Doherty, two thirty-eight Peter Spring Road. Uh, I've lived in the neighborhood for fifteen years. Uh, I do have a son at CCC currently, but uh, by the time this project's completed, it's unlikely. He will, uh, he will still be at CCC. So, uh, I hope my comments are taken more as a neighbor. Uh, and and less so as a, as a CCC parent at the moment. Uh, I've been dropping him off at CCC for the past three years. Uh, I don't believe at any time, and picking him up for that matter, I don't believe at any time. Uh, there have been more than two, perhaps three other parents dropping off at the same time that that I was dropping him off and picking him up. So any suggestion that there's going to be, you know, ten or fifteen cars in a parking lot uh, at a single time. Just doesn't reflect uh, three years of experience doing this very specific thing. Um, I'd also say that, you know, I hate the traffic as much as everybody else. Um, but the real traffic concern in Concord was when Cambridge Turnpike closed for renovation. Uh, at that point, uh, things started backing up in a way that that I had never seen in the twelve years prior that I had lived here. That included uh, Bedford backing all the way up past Peter Spring, well, past Prescott. Um, which, you know, likewise, we had a similar uh, congestion at Bedford, Old Bedford. I, I go to Ripley every single day. Um, and if magically CCC was at two fifty Old Bedford Road. Uh, I would not create one iota of difference in traffic. I would make a a a left turn into it instead of a right turn in it and then come back out. And go to the highway. And when my son is no longer at CCC, I'll continue to drive uh, past uh, that. Facility every single day on my way to work. So whether it's there or not there, I am part of that traffic. I'm I'm making very little change to it. Uh, you, you, traffic engineers can do all the, the math and hard, you know, facts. But I I'm talking more anecdotally. Um. You know, I I I think it's so important. My first year, uh, I was not able to have my son. At uh, CCC, uh, Ripley's location. I had to have him at Emerson. Um, and so if, you know, while I know that we're focused on the traffic in the immediate vicinity. Losing childcare on this side of Concord, uh, if if CCC were to continue to operate as they have. Means that all of us uh, on this side, uh, are going to have to drive through downtown into West Concord or over to Emerson. Drop our kids off and in many cases, as was mine, drive all the way back through downtown. Uh, and and then I would drive, as I used to, right through that intersection again, uh, as I always did. So. If we look at this more holistically, rather than just, you know, what's in our exact neighborhood. And I understand everyone on the call here, for the most part, is most concerned with with the traffic that uh, is right in front of us. But if we look at this more holistically for the town, uh, there are traffic implications that that happen. When you close a daycare facility uh, and force everyone over here who needs it. And I I won't by the time this building's up, but my neighbors will uh, to drive other places in town and then often back through the traffic. But you, you know, it's there. So that's my, that's my concern. Um, I hope that uh, I hope that we can get this up and running. Um, as I said, I I won't benefit from it, but I think many, many people on this side of Concord will. So thank you.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Doherty. Uh, Michelle Beck, please.
Hello, um, so first I want to thank everyone for um, the thoughtful responses back and um. The kind of consideration for the neighborhood. I think that's really important. I want to echo a couple of things that have come up earlier that are important to me as in a butter and um. Someone very close to the facility. Um, I think whatever can be done for the crosswalks. Um, both on Virginia and Old Bedford Road, similar to what's done on the Bruce Freeman Trail. Um, which was on the way to my son's middle school would be fabulous. And I would strongly, strongly request that that be part of consideration. Um. And whatever can be done um, for signage in the Philip Farm and Kenny Lane neighborhoods about no parking would probably be helpful. Um, there's been lots of discussion about traffic. I won't add anymore to that. Um, I agree that there's. It would be great if we could have hovercraft and not drive, but I don't think that's possible. Um. So, no more on that, but anything that can be done to kind of restrict parking more than just communication. And um, to kind of make those crosswalks safer, I think would be really helpful.
Great. Thank you very much for those comments, Michelle. Um, Peter Monaghan, please.
Thanks. Um, Peter Monahan, two or three Moxon Road, uh, which is about a mile away from CCC. I had two kids go through there um, over a period of five or six years. Um. So during the last meeting, a lot of people testified about what a special place CCC is and how important is that affordable care. in, in town. And I'd agree with all that. My comment is, is that, you know, no place is perfect. It's gonna be in kind of resistance wherever we, they propose to go. Yeah, in my opinion, the ideal solution has two pieces to it. The first is to stay in the same neighborhood so that the overall traffic volume for the general area stays the same. And, you know, but one example of staying in the same area is like if they went to the end of Daltonburg, you know, as an example, which that's parallel to Mariam, you'd be in the same neighborhood, but it would significantly change the dynamic of the neighborhood. So the second part of the ideal solution, and probably ideals not to like work is, you know, it's synonymous with perfect. I'm not suggesting that, but but the second part would be to avoid quiet streets like a Dalton or road like that and put it on a street that's already busy. So, so you can't say it's completely altering the neighborhood. So that's really my two points that, you know, two fifty Old Bedford is not perfect, but since it meets the criteria of being in the same neighborhood and since we've avoided putting it on a, a street that's currently quiet, I think the pros that weigh the cons.
Great. Thank, thank you for those comments, Mr. Monaghan. And, and I just want to, you, you queued in my mind, something that, you know, that, that I wanted to point out your comment and somebody else's that there's, you know, this is a residential neighborhood, but it, under state law, right, childcare facilities that we, there, no, no zoning ordinance, ordinances can prohibit a childcare facility from, from being located in a residential district. And our job here tonight is to consider whether they are otherwise meeting, you know, there are reasonable zoning requirements that would apply to their use. And I want to give the applicant just a, a chance to respond to two things, which I think we're looking for responses. One was that traffic analysis of when you get tra, traffic snaking around backed up from the entrance such that it blocks the exit. And then the, the other, I believe the applicant wanted, you, John, you wanted to respond to some of the, the discussion around they, the, the, the legal argument around when, when parking relief could be granted.
Thank you. And I would like to start with the latter of those two points and then introduce, reintroduce Jennifer. I believe that we have some slides that, that clearly demonstrate based on historical data from the past several years, the drop-up, drop-off and pickup patterns. The earlier comments that were made about prior zoning, I'm not going to, you know, pretend that I understand some zoning that dates back to ninety-two or ninety-four, but I, there, there was a comment that, that in that zoning, it didn't mention specifically, you know, do you take the, an old site that is relocating and use the numbers from that old site? What we are in fact doing here is relocating to schools, combining them into one, providing that resource for the community. The enrollment will actually be less than the combination of those two schools. The other most important part of this I, and, and understanding that those comments is that this does, Mr. Chairman, as you just mentioned, this does come under chapter forty-eight. And not only does it allow the development and the placement of a school and religious facilities within a residential neighborhood, chapter forty-eight specifically references parking as, as one of those items that the applicants cannot be held to an unreasonable standard. We feel that the school in this case has presented a very great amount of detail, again, based on history from pickup and drop-offs. So we're not just kind of guessing at, you know, how would this look? It, it's from facts. It's from data that, that Pat and her team have kept over the past several years. And we also have a, a case here where the director, Pat, and her team have clearly demonstrated, as has been supported by some of the comments tonight from past parents, that they are able to very much schedule pickup and drop-off times. This is not a kind of care. It's not a bright horizons. Those are, I'm sure, very wonderful schools and childcare centers, but they're corporate models. This is a neighborhood school. It's a school that, that really, you know, it, it's, it's operated in a different manner. And so again, we have a history of our management and our staff being able to very effectively manage those pickup and drop-off times. So that combined with the historical data and the protection afforded by chapter forty-eight, we feel we have clearly demonstrated that we have met that reasonableness standard. And if it's okay, I thank you for that time. I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer so we can show again that that scenario of cars backing up out into Virginia Road just doesn't exist. And we look at the worst-case scenario and we, Jennifer, Jennifer, if you don't mind being able to share those slides.
I don't. So I'll, I'll do that right now. I'll share my screen for the planning board. These diagrams have been included in the package that you should have received prior to this meeting. I, I think it's fair to emphasize not everyone who brings their children to the CCC currently works from nine to five. And so what that means is that CCC needs to accommodate many working schedules, often in dual income, two parents that work full-time families. A staggered work schedule is required because of childcare. So what this, what this collection of diagrams will show, I'll show you, I'll show you them in a row here, is a time sequence from seven o'clock in the morning until six fifteen in the evening. And I'll explain to you right now, the purple vehicle diagram here, those are the staff that are arriving and the light blue vehicles here, those are the staff, those are the families that are arriving to drop off and leave. So these numbers and the number of cars that I'm showing you, these are not, these are not pulled out of thin air. This is all based on empirical data that has been collected by the CCC. Pat can speak to these in more detail as soon as I finish here. So at seven o'clock, you have four teachers arriving. You have three families arriving. By eight o'clock, one hour later, those four original teacher cars, they've turned dark purple in this diagram because they haven't moved. They're still there. You have additional teachers arriving. That's four additional teachers. And then you have the bulk of your families arriving to drop off their children and leave. There's still a space available here in, at eight o'clock in the morning, as well as a space for someone with an ADA placard. At eight thirty, just a half an hour later, as you can see, a few more teachers have showed up and a few more families have showed up. Nine o'clock, the, the purple cars here that you're seeing, those are all the teachers that have arrived and they have not moved. So what that does, you have a few more two people coming at nine. Most people usually arrive to work by nine o'clock, which means that you have the bulk of the drop-offs have already happened, as I just showed you. You have a few more families straggling in. And then between ten and twelve thirty, your parking lot is occupied primarily by staff. The purple cars have already been there. Again, they have not moved and you have these new cars. This is new teachers, new staff showing up. That's between ten and twelve thirty. And then we start with the, with the pickups. You have the queuing line here of families that are pulling up, their children are being loaded into their cars and they are exiting the driveway down here at Old Bedford. That's at twelve thirty. Purple cars haven't moved. Those are still your staff. At one o'clock, just a half an hour later, again, you have the staff cars in purple, the families that are arriving to pick up their children and leave are in blue. There are just six in the parking lot. At two o'clock, you have no families. It's only staff and you have your afternoon childcare at the facility. At three o'clock, again, a few families, there are eight family cars picking up their children and leaving. At three thirty, it is just staff. At four o'clock, that's our second major pickup. Staff have, have started to dissipate. Again, the, the purple, they haven't moved. Those are the same cars that have been there. You have new families coming to pick up their children at four. At five o'clock, same scenario, ten families picking up to, to take their children. Plenty of parking in the parking lot with just five staff cars. At five thirty, again, the, you can see the trend here, families coming at the end of the day to pick up their children and leave. Plenty of parking in the parking lot. Staff continues to be reduced. At six o'clock, it's the same. And then at six fifteen, almost everyone has departed. You have probably people like Pat burning the midnight oil at six fifteen and, and shortly after. And then, of course, by seven, the parking lot should be fairly empty.
Jennifer, could you quickly go to twelve thirty?
Sure.
Was, that was where the queue is longest. Okay, so under this scenario, I could imagine, you know, maybe a little conflict between cars backing up, maybe somebody shows up late, somebody shows up early, you start to get eight, nine, ten cars, at which point you really reasonably, we're, we're looking, it looks like more or less probably passenger-sized cars. I'm sure there's a fair number of, you, you know, the expedition-type vehicles. Would it, it seems like it would be reasonable to require, I mean, you guys, especially for pickups, are going to need to have staff out there managing. I think you said the, the pickup plan would be staff bringing children out. It seems like this line is of really significant concern. I mean, it does seem like we're very far from that snake curling around the, around the island and blocking the exit. But is this something that we could agree should be in the parking management plan that that would not, that line would not exceed, you know, you, you've got six cars here, but eight cars, because I think as soon as it's backing up onto Virginia Road, you're gonna have a, an issue.
When, when we started to look at the the actual number of parking spaces we would need for this population. And we went back and I went back and looked at the pickup times over the last five years. Our twelve thirty, we don't have as many families that pick up at twelve thirty as we might have had ten years ago or fifteen years ago. Our families, our kids typically are with us until that three, four, five, five thirty pickup. What makes this a busy time is that we have the, the kind of the, the turnover of staff. We have some of the morning staff who are still in the parking lot and the afternoon staff are arriving. So there's a brief period in which we have a lot of staff at the parking lot while we do the changing of the guard. But we don't typically have that many families that are picking up at that twelve thirty time. And that's how, that's how I modeled and came up with the twenty parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, Pat. That's very informative.
I just was curious, is that a distinction between the, that side of town and West Concord? Because I just noticed that on the West Concord side, actually, twelve thirty seems to be quite a popular pickup time.
So West Concord, we have pickups happening at both Children's Center, but you also have the pickups that are happening at the carousel and anything that's going on at the Council on Aging and now the yoga classes in the rec department. So it's a little bit hard to tease all of that out.
Well, yeah, I just was curious, like strictly, like you already know your enrollment slots for this fall, for example. Like I just was curious if there was like a demographic difference for, and I mean, my, my two went to Carousel and West Concord CCC, so I, I was there every day at twelve thirty. So I know what that looked like.
Well, I will say that typically, families at Ripley are later pickups than families at West Concord. So that has been a bit of a trend, but you know, I, I
Yeah, I was just curious.
I'm looking more overall at the whole population.
Okay, thank you. Any other final comments from the applicants? In response, in response to the public comment we had? Okay. If we could, and, and it's nine thirty, and we have a, a number of things to get to. I'd like to talk about logistics. So we've now received, I think, as Elizabeth's memo shows, the applicants responded to prior town department comments that have been raised, and I believe most instances, they've, they've been resolved or that there are suggestions in the planner's memo. I think that at this point, we should talk about whether we, as a board, we would want to direct Elizabeth to prepare a decision letter or a, 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 a letter approving and, and what conditions would be required and the timeline for that. And Pat, the, there's a little bit of a, you know, it's in July, I, and, and we've got to, in order to prepare a, a letter, Elizabeth, you're, you're out for some time and would, it would be very challenging to have a, a letter, a decision, a draft decision for the board to review with conditions done by, I think our next meeting is the twenty-seventh of this month. And we, I'm wondering if we can ask the applicant to continue to allow us to, to issue a decision to vote on a decision letter on the tenth of August, which would be at the, the next subsequent meeting.
I'm, I am out of the office starting this Thursday and won't be back till the twenty-sixth. So it, it would be impossible for me to draft a decision with conditions.
Sounds like you're saying it's impossible, Elizabeth. And, and while we're, you know, we're, we're operating on a timeline and, and wanting to try to move things along. I, I don't think I can magically make Elizabeth able to to do this when she's gonna be out of the office until the twenty-sixth. I, I mean, I think I have to defer to Elizabeth. But, but, but John Amaral might have something to say, so.
No, I'm completely in agreement with that. And it was more just a question, the NRC members did extend us into August, wanting to first understand, you know, the position of the planning board and its members. And so is it possible, Elizabeth, for you to be able to speak with the chair of the NRC to share with them the, you know, the, the comments and where the board, you know, what was presented tonight? So that they perhaps will be in a better position. They, they really, out of respect for the planning board, wanted to wait and see what what, what came back from, from the board itself.
Whatever the, you know, the board decides this need to be tonight and directs me, I will inform the Natural Resources Director of that tomorrow. The scheduling is the Natural Resources Commission waits for the planning board to be basically almost complete with their review so that there are no additional major changes to the plans that the Natural Resources Commission is going to move forward and approve. So however the board directs me tonight, I will have that conversation with the Natural Resources Director tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, so to the rest of the board, I guess we're not taking a vote on this, but would we, we'd like to direct Elizabeth to prepare a draft approval letter with, with conditions for us to consider on the August tenth meeting. So two meetings from now. And if so, I'd like to ask for any particular suggestions on what those conditions would be. And we can run through them. And I think, you know, Elizabeth can quickly note them. And, and we can have a sense of the board at, at that point. Elizabeth, any other logistical direction?
Nope. So two things. One, if the board continues this to August tenth, the applicant will need to, and the provide a time extension and the board would have to accept that time extension tonight as well.
Right.
But to run through conditions, the condition, and just to facilitate this for board members, so you don't have to go through everything. The three spaces along the eastern property line shall be utilized by staff. One item that was brought up at the previous June eighth meeting had to deal with a request from the Director Butter to the East that the fence along that property line be eight feet and not six feet. I will need to discuss with engineering the timing of whether it's prior to site work or prior to certificate of occupancy, the vegetation. Whether it's prior to site work or prior to certificate of occupancy, the vegetation for the driveway exit being. Cleared back and how that will work on a maintenance basis. Condition regarding the height of the light poles in the parking lot be measured from the ground. Condition regarding the scheduled garbage pickup. Not to be between twelve thirty and three thirty, and I think there was a. Request that it definitely not be before the school opens up, which is seven AM. And I will need to touch base with the Engineering Division regarding the crosswalk and. How that will work as far as having additional signage for safety that may also be within their. Capital planning process already, so I will check into that. And then there'll be standard conditions from town departments and staff. That the board is aware of regarding. Construction sequencing and safety plans, a pre-construction meeting. Various conditions from water and sewer, CMLP, engineering regarding right of way permits. So all of those standard conditions will also be included.
Okay, and and if I can just add a couple of things, and maybe these are already covered. I was a little confused on the discussion of the crosswalk site and the and the traffic engineering, the crosswalk sign and the traffic engineering report, whether they were referring to the crosswalk in the parking lot. Or the one of the crosswalks crossing Virginia or Old Bedford.
I think it, I think it's both engineering talked about having appropriate signage within. The parking lot regarding no parking in the handicap crosswalk in the parking lot. And then I believe there was discussion regarding actual improving the signage for the crosswalk on Old Bedford Road.
Right, and and we heard again tonight that that would be very much appreciated by the butter, by neighbors as well as myself. Then I also saw this, I this may already just be reflected in the site plan, but a stop sign at the exit. Of the of the parking. And I think, you know, regarding those, the the those three parking spaces, you said that they would be utilized by employees. I want those to be employee parking only. With that, with the space closest to Virginia Road designated as a small, small car parking. And then. One thing, I think we saw a comment in one of the reports, there's a lot of materials about a limit on capacity, right? Of the in for, I believe, with respect to future enrollments. I presume that the approved plan. With the with the parking relief is based upon a capacity number, and if you then go above, you've got a new calculation, you need new parking spaces, right? Is that the case?
That would be correct. Part of this decision would be to limit the staff and total enrollment based on what was provided.
Right, so I wasn't sure if that was an express condition or if that's implied by the approval based upon that that calculation.
Um, it it can be both.
Okay, yeah, I I think I think that we just need to make sure that that is, in fact, the case. And.
Very quick question.
Mr. Nagler, yeah, I actually, right now, I think we've moved beyond to the public comment period, so. We've got your, we received your prior comments, but I I want to move through this here and provide Elizabeth her direction. The Elizabeth, you mentioned the the vegetation at the. You know, checking it for sightlines, I think that that should be an ongoing condition to require, to maintain that that vegetation. Were there any other? Conditions that planning board members would make note of or or would want Elizabeth to incorporate into any approval letter?
I think just the comment about the lighting, the lighting fixture bases where they're positioned.
It seems like they're, I just want to comment on the parking. Can you just, in in terms of thinking about a condition there? Can you or Elizabeth just clarify? What the standard is that we're making a decision on for parking, because I see the standard at eleven eight seven, which seems pretty general and. But there was a reference back to section seven, so can you please? Can you please just go over, is there a specific request for relief from something? And what is the standard for the granting of such relief? Is this is this appropriate, Burton?
Or? Yeah, certainly is something we need to be thinking about as we get to approval, if we if we choose to, we vote to approve. Absolutely, that's the core issue. I mean, they are requesting relief from the parking requirement, they they but going by the numbers of enrollment. They they their staff and 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 visitor parking spaces that gets you to thirty three and they're proposing. Twenty. And and so there is a standard, there's discussion in section seven, seven, two, one of the required parking spaces and and. Under what conditions the ZBA or the planning board, if the planning board in this case, may allow for a reduction in the number of required parking spaces. There's that, there's that standard there.
And that's for site plan review.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Anybody else have a condition? And I I know that sometimes these things. We're not finalizing anything here, but anything that Elizabeth, you would want to see addressed, you want to see Elizabeth address.
I have just two questions. One is with regard to evening events or other events where sort of all school parents attend. Is there any way to? Prevent spill over traffic in the neighborhood or or concerns about that? And then a second question is with regard to snow removal. You know, I I see they're designated areas for snow removal. I'm not quite convinced that they could hold. The capacity of that, and I'm not quite sure, you know, relative to. Having to really clear the entire parking lot very well. When there would be times to do that, that would not, again, disturb. The butters and others in the neighborhood or affect traffic on. Virginia Road or Old Bedford Road. So those are two questions I have.
Okay, so in terms of a condition, Elizabeth, and thank you very much for the both those points, Linda, the. Elizabeth, I think there was a comment about directing the school to discourage. Parking, and we heard that comment tonight. I knew in the nearby streets, and I know that 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 the the. I guess the the schools, the Concord Public Schools have said they could use the Ripley facility for evening parking. After hours, but is it, is it within our purview or or to direct as a condition? That they, as part of their track parking management plan. Have a program to. Discourage parking in the nearby residential area.
The board can include that as a condition that parking. Parking shall not be permitted in the adjacent residential streets. For any childcare. Activity or function.
Linda, would that satisfy your concern, things you've heard?
I think so. Yes, I think it would.
Okay.
There's also a standard condition regarding snow removal. That is for. Projects of this nature. I am. Reluctant to ever place a condition on any project that. Snow plowing can can't happen during a particular time because. Snow plowing needs to happen when. Snow needs to be plowed and you get, you know, two inches an hour. Everybody, everybody plows or, you know, does snow removal when they have to, so. But there is a standard condition that. Should the areas for designated for snow storage. Be full or especially at the end of the driveways, impede any site distance. That they have to remove, have snow removal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right. I think we've heard from everybody. And so what I'd like to do. Yeah, yes, Haley.
I probably know the standard answer from Elizabeth on this one, but. Obviously, on the sustainability stuff, there's a lot of will try. And I I guess the continuous. Circumstance we're under, right, is that there's just nothing we can put in as conditions related to like even ensuring the effort is made. On the all electric side anyways, is that right? You're on mute, but.
You are correct. And if it was almost impossible or challenging with the residential project, I would say it would be even more so for. Any type of school, daycare, or religious institutions.
Okay. Elizabeth, do you think, feel like you have what you need from the board now to prepare a draft letter?
Yes, I can prepare one. Some of the items that the board will have to discuss as part of your findings would be in relationship. To the requested reduction in. The parking, I want to. Clarify that it's it's not relief from parking, the bylaw specifically allows the reduction. So long as there's, you know, it's not to increase enrollment, but as it. Relates to having a traffic management plan, which the board has discussed conditions to that traffic management plan. Part of that traffic management plan will be the. Parking diagrams that have been provided, the narrative that's been provided, so all of that goes into. Traffic Management Plan and then also the. Discussion on the bulk and height of the structure is one of the other findings that the board has to make. I think all of the other site plan findings such as utilities or. Fire departments, you know, those are standard and town staff didn't have any issues or concerns with those.
Okay, thank you for that guidance. I appreciate that. I do believe we need to go ahead and ask for an extension, propose that we. Let's see.
An extension.
Thank you. Do you want to make that motion? Put you in the spot.
So if the applicant can is willing to grant an extension to August thirteenth.
Is it the tenth or thirteenth?
The tenth is the meeting. It would be impossible for me to file a decision on the tenth.
Yeah.
So. Because the board's decision does need to be filed with the town clerk. So if the applicant can provide a time extension to August thirteenth and the board continue. This item to August tenth for at ten, at seven thirty.
Wow, okay. I make a motion that the board continue this hearing to August tenth at seven thirty. And ask that the applicant grant a time extension to August thirteenth.
Well, so the applicant has to state they'll grant the time extension to August thirteenth, and the board has to accept the granting of that time extension.
Okay, so let's let's put the cart cart back in behind the horse. Would the applicant? Like to. Propose an extension or allow an extension until August thirteenth.
Yeah, I would like to allow an extension to August thirteenth.
Thank you very much, Pat. Now, Nathan, do you want to make your motion?
I make a motion that the board continue this hearing to August tenth at seven thirty PM.
I would second that.
And accept the.
I'll accept that as amended. Right. Let's do a roll call since we're in a virtual meeting here. So I'll start with I Kate.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Nathan.
Yes.
And Burton MES. Okay. So I think then with that, we, Elizabeth, keep me in line, but I think we can move on to our next item for the evening, correct?
So your next item. The applicant for. One, Burton would need to open the.
Yeah.
Hearing for forty eight Y Fitchburg Turnpike definitive subdivision plan. And I will note that Andrew Boardman has returned.
Welcome back, Andrew. Okay, so we have a, our our next item is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And. For the consideration of the the application for. In accordance with the provisions of MGL, chapter forty one, section eighty one dash T, and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations. To review the definitive subdivision plan, application of Quarry North Road LLC to to create a one lot subdivision with access from the Town of Sudbury for the Concord portion of the track. At forty eight Y Fitchburg Turnpike. However, I will continue, continue without discussion to October twelfth, the the public hearing at the applicant's request and accept the time extension. From the applicant until October thirtieth. And so, Elizabeth, can I just go ahead and close the public hearing then?
So somebody needs to second that motion.
Oh, thank you.
And you would vote. You don't technically close the public hearing, you're continuing.
We're continuing. Thank you. So again, a motion to continue the hearing to the twelfth and accept the time extension request from the applicant until October thirtieth.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. And so I'll once again do a roll call. Kate.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Is that your first vote on the planning board?
Thanks.
Kristen.
Yeah.
Haley.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
And Burton, I'm a yes.
I think it's a yes, but.
I'm sorry, Nathan. Yes, Nathan. You're you're a yes. Okay, thank you. So that is continued, and now we have. A eight items of administrative business. The first item was a a discussion, I guess, Elizabeth, on this. McColler Lane question. I believe you had a comment on that.
So I will, I will run through your eight items quickly. The first item, the board does not need to discuss at all. I did receive input from town council, as stated in my agenda memo. That the relocation of the driveway from Main Street to McColler Lane. Which is a private way is. Not under the jurisdiction of the planning board. And. So the applicant. So.
Enough said. Now we've got approval in A and R.
Yep, so I can bring that up. So this is an A and R off Pond Street. In West Concord, off Pond Street is off of Los Brook Road. I can bring up a different map if there's anybody that needs. Does anybody need me to show a different map? I can only see three, four of you at a time, so if somebody just has a question, please just let me know. This is Pond Street is a public right of way, the utilities, town water, sewer, electric. Extend just past forty three Pond Street. Extends to a house over here. The roadway is paved. And the applicant is proposing to divide this existing lot into one additional building, buildable lot. Sixty four feet of the hundred and twelve feet of frontage. 64 feet of the 112 feet of frontage. The properties in residency zone district, which requires minimum 10,000 square feet and 80 feet of frontage. So paved portion of 64 feet, I believe, is is more than adequate to gain access to the buildable portion of the lot. It's it's basically flat. And so am recommending that the board endorse the plan as approval not required.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
Just real quick question. So you pointed it out because the the road is only paved for 64 feet in front of that lot?
Correct.
So does frontage is not defined, I guess, by paved road?
Frontage is not defined by paved road for an approval not required, there has to be the frontage has to be adequate to to gain access to the buildable portion of the lot.
Okay.
Can I ask for a motion on that? I I don't have actually Elizabeth, your memo in front of me, so I don't have all the magic words for an A and R. If anybody else has that.
I would I would make a motion that the board moved to endorse the plan by Stamsky and McNary, Inc. It's titled Plan of Land Concord Massachusetts for Bentley Builders dated June 16th, 2021 and owned by Digi LLC. As approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision because it shows the division of land so that every lot zone has the required frontage as required by the Concord zoning by law, an adequate public way and authorize the chair, clerk, clerk or town planner to endorse the plan. Elizabeth, this says it has a required frontage, but do we also have to say square footage?
No. And and A and R deals with solely deals with frontage and adequacy of that frontage.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you, Kristen. Our I will now I will do a roll call. Nathan.
Yes.
Hi, Kate.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
And Linda.
Yes.
And M E S. Thank you. So that passes. That approval was for the A and R was given. All right.
So the next item just this does not have to be a deep, you know, a heavy discussion because there's still a lot of work to do on the Throw Depot project. This is just for the board to just throw out any hot topics or very specific things that you think MAPC and I need to kind of look into a little bit more. One of the takeaways from the public forum was with the issue with the design guidelines and the illustrations that were used. So I was able to find funding in our current budget to basically hire MAPC to do additional work on that since the work that's been done so far, we're almost at the end of the grant funds that were allocated or awarded to us. So felt that was an a very important aspect of the design guidelines that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. So if there's anything else.
Elizabeth, I'm sorry. I don't know what you're referring to. What was the problem with the illustrations and what's the goal of revising?
At the public forum, there were various comments that the illustrations in the design guidelines did not accurately reflect the conquered character.
So so Kate, this was the the illustrative building that was shown on the Crosby lot and, you know, front confronting Sudbury Road and there was some some varied feedback on that.
And so it sounds like the the new funding would just allow for further illustrations that have sort of you know, differing setbacks and things like that, which was discussed. So sounds good to me.
So so additional additional drawings, not just different drawings? To show variety? Both. Okay. So MAPC will come back to the board for with revisions and suggestions and changes for the board to review.
It's like we we don't even know if we're adopting those though, do we? Like, why? Why finalize them?
Well, I'm not saying you're going to finalize them, but you should, if you're going to move forward with whether to move forward with this project and the design guidelines, you should have illustrations that at least accurately reflect public comment that came in. That was the whole purpose of the forum.
Yeah, Kate, I think, you know, the idea is, is we as we continue to work through this as in in future board meetings. We, you know, we want to sort of strike figure, continue to get input from from the public on what this could look like. And I think and and what should be allowed. And I think giving them ideas of, you know, with, you know, different design ideas that fit within the proposed zoning changes that would might show things that are more in line with conquered character would be helpful for people to visualize how the changes. Well, you know, it could be utilized.
Okay.
Is it's like somebody in Concord on the who's more, I know nothing about design, but we obviously have a lot of knowledgeable people on the topic, like, is MAPC going to work closely with somebody to improve or show different variations? Or like, how are they going to get there? Or what are they going to, you know, what's got sort of guiding them for updates?
So they'll be working with with me and just the feedback that they receive from the public. The two public forums and also going back to the original public forum when they had that the the visual display and the the examples that people selected and gravitated towards and utilizing those in a different manner within the guidelines and also the MAC MAPC planner was thinking that he would also go back to actual photos of different pictures of different structures, whether that's within town or within other village centers similar to Concord and see how those might fit into the whole design guideline discussion.
Yeah, if I if I may, I mean, I can't remember exactly who was this has been such a long ongoing process, but we started it out right with pictures of various types of buildings that could be allowed in this sort of transit oriented types of development. People stuck their stickers on the ones they liked and and I was surprised, in fact, by, you know, what people were choosing. We we did get a pretty good survey, though, of what what kinds of designs are appreciated in Concord. I think then what happened was that that was translated into a no offense to the MAPC, a rough design, you know, it was not meant to be something that an architect would produce to create a building. And and people in in the absence of, you know, more varied designer, things like that, people, you know, reacted to that design, which was really just meant to be a skim, you know, just a holding place. I think taking more of the feedback that was originally pulled together at that initial forum and turning it into something that actually looks more like a building in a space in a in its place would be very helpful as if if we want to progress this conversation.
I I guess I I just continued and I I don't understand why. It seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. Like, don't don't we decide to implement the bylaw changes first? And then invest resources in finalizing the design guidelines?
I think we need to get people, the the public in general, sort of onboard and and understanding what it is that we're trying to do. So I think I was just going to say one other thing. I think what happened sort of was people locked in on the one design set, thinking that was sort of what was going to happen. And I think it'd be helpful if MAPC was able to sort of lay out some variation to understand, like, okay, we've taken this input and, you know, these are some different potential designs that could happen should someone decide to develop that that space.
And and we're not talking about setting the design guidelines. We're talking about doing a a drawing a picture of.
We're investing money. We're investing town budget into the design guidelines outside of the.
Guidelines, not the design guidelines. We're talking about the 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 graphic images that are used as part of our discussion of this.
Okay, but we're we're investing money now outside of the grant, the the initial idea for developing this idea of what was possible at Throw Depot was that we got a grant to do it. And now we're going outside that grant.
Okay, so you're the development of the the revised amen, you know, revised zoning for the Throw Depot. You will, should the board move forward, you will have to develop the design guidelines at the same time because the draft zoning will specifically reference design guidelines. So they they have to be developed at the same time.
Okay, sorry, I I'm not being like direct enough. Like, I guess I have some fundamental questions about whether we should go forward with this. I guess that that's we should. So maybe nobody else does. I think there are some fundamental questions about this compatibility of this idea of this project with commuter parking for the train station. Okay, so I guess I'm I'm sorry, I.
That's I'm glad you're raising that. So so Kate, let's frame what we're considering. Elizabeth, you're not asking for our input on to whether to go get designs. That's within your purview as the town planner to engage within your staff, which you are are given through the town meeting process to 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 do that, right?
It's coming out of my budget. Yes.
Right. So you're not asking for our approval of any of that tonight?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and but but Kate, we will obviously have, I mean, we've 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 had public forums. You will obviously have a vote on whether we move forward with any zoning changes and input if we move forward in zoning changes on any design guidelines. So there's plenty of there'll be plenty of bites at the apple. This is just Elizabeth telling us that, hey, good news. I found money in the budget to get what I believe would be a more illustrative image to explain what we're doing here because it's very difficult to translate these these zoning zoning code into visuals.
And and so the other the other question is, is whether there were other items that came out of the public forum that need that should be looked into further.
Yeah, and and I would, one thing that I was, I I I I keep hearing, I mean, it seemed like a couple of the points that kept being raised, right, was was parking commuter rail parking, right? And and we got to talk about that. I and I did not have a chance to look at that background material that Marsha provided today. But also, you know, I wonder about the height change, right? The people, when they saw the 38 feet, they, I think a lot of people assumed there was a that was going to bring a very big change to the neighborhood. While the current allowed height is 35 feet. Right? And I wonder what do we, how much would that be a a shackle on and I on on us moving forward with other changes? Because people react that way to 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 concerns about height. And in terms of benefit, I don't know if other board members have their 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 thoughts on you know, whether one of the essential changes we're looking at here is to allow potentially, I guess, that that gets you to 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 allow a a three story building that has commercial space on the first floor. Is that essentially why they want to go to the proposing? Yeah, so I guess if you stuck with 35, you could get three story residential, two story a a two story mixed use building.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I can I can go back to MAPC and have them, you know, clarify the reasoning for that suggestion.
Okay, I mean, that would be, I think that would be helpful.
I think what would be helpful to, you know, given even Kate's comments are my understanding is we've got to do something right under the newest regulation about each town with a commuter rail stop having to like increase density. Um, so I don't know if this is a Elizabeth question or an MAPC question, but like understand what's like the minimum we are now like by law obligated to do. And then it's like to your point, Kate, like being unconvinced that we should do anything. It sounds like we have to do something. So the question is, what is that to satisfy the new law? Um, and then, you know, the other end of the spectrum being like three stories as proposed, like, you know, going sort of the other end of the spectrum, which maybe is what MAPC has shown illustratively anyways at this point, but just I think it would be helpful to get like a sense of the spectrum of what we could be talking about.
So at the basic level, the requirement is to have by right zoning for a density of 15 units per acre.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, is that do we have to do have that at both train stations?
No, I don't believe so.
So it could be one or the other?
I believe so.
And do we already have it in West Concord? And I'm sorry, I was trying to pull up the zoning map. So maybe the question more is, and this goes to our goals this year, is like to assess what's required to be compliant with the MBTA Communities Act. If we're not, if this isn't for.
Whether whether Brookside Square meets that requirement, I'm not sure, but Brookside Square was not a by right zoning. So I'm I'm not sure how the state, and it's a question I'll have to ask, how the state will handle, you know, existing projects that may already be built within a half mile of a train station. And whether that's at the 15 units per acre or not, I don't.
I don't know. You know, off the top of your head that multifamily housing is not as of right right now in West Concord around the train station.
Brookside Square was by special permit.
Right, okay.
And and so I guess as part of the discussion, you know, we want to look back, especially as we're talking about the goals. You know, we did want more dense development. We wanted more pedestrian friendly. You know, so we we did a lot to get to this point. So let's not kind of lose sight of what the original purpose was. And then it happened that also we we got this, you know, mandate about the about the density close to transit.
And so in just to add, so so my concern, so some of the things that really floated to the top for me have been addressed in terms of commuter parking and the MBTA Communities Act. The third thing is not knowing how potential changes would impact the existing uses, which are pretty kind of basic amenity to people on this side of town, which is the grocery store, the drugstore and the hardware store. So I think, but I mean, as Kristen just said, like, we had goals that we were building to towards like increasing density, getting housing. And now with all of this, the work that we've done, it's like, it's great to know how we're going to get to that goal, but then we have to know what are we trading for that?
But you're not trading, not trading anything. You're 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 developing, you're developing a mechanism that allows something to happen. Grocery stores will still be a permitted use. Help me out. Services that people have are still a permitted use.
Exactly. So are we incentivizing? I mean, isn't the whole point that that lot could be redeveloped in a different way? So are we incentivizing that property owner to go ahead and redevelop it in a different way and lose commuter parking and, you know, and and lose the tenant of Crosby's and change it into, I guess that that's the part I don't understand. I mean, potentially, that could still be a use, but yeah.
Kate, I think you're reading really good, important points that need to be discussed. Could I, I I think, and we will be having future meetings where the Throw Depot is is really one of the primary agenda items. I'm thinking that it's 10:15. We've got a couple more things to get through this evening. And maybe what we could do is specific to these points on the just the follow up discussion in terms of things that we would want Elizabeth to be going back to MAPC on. And 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 so that they can provide that information to us for our next meeting discussing that. If we could just kind of distill to those things, so rather than actually going through all the issues and having that discussion tonight.
Okay, and so can that be one of the issues, though? That's what I was trying to get at. For me, that's one of the main issues. So I was hoping that that could be on the list of issues that.
So so if can I, is that maybe for Elizabeth's benefit, is that distilled down to what extent would these zoning changes likely drive out existing uses?
Thank you.
Okay.
And that was a big public comment question that we got, so.
Yeah. I mean, I I think one of the things that really drives it home is just look on Google Maps. Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the things that really drives it home is just look on Google Maps and look at the Throw Depot District. And it's an awful lot of asphalt.
Exactly, no, exactly Burton, it looks that way to somebody who doesn't realize that we depend on that asphalt for commuter rail parking. Like that's exactly the point. It's not, it's like, and where are we gonna, where are we gonna park, put our parking if not there?
Maybe I missed this, because like, like Burton, I haven't had a chance to read what Marsha sent, or what was sent around from Marsha. I mean, the, the current owner could redevelop the space under the existing rules as they see fit. You know, they could kick Crosby's out and have Whole Foods move in.
They could, but we're incentivizing them in a different way by these changes. That's the whole point of these changes is to incentivize them to develop it differently. That's.
No, I have, I have what I need.
Yeah, yeah. But the parking requirements don't go away for, for, for uses, we're allowing additional uses and, and, and on top of what we've got. Let's move on though to the, the, the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two planning board goals and project discussion. We've got the memo, thank you Elizabeth very much, running through, I, I, I was quite pleased to see the amount of progress that the boards made. Elizabeth, did you want to go through there and raise things that you need our input on to finalize that memo and provide it to the select board?
Okay, does everybody see the draft memo?
Yes.
Okay, I'm never sure when I start sharing a screen. So your goals memo typically goes through and gives an update on what happened the previous year. As you can see, completed, Throw Depot is ongoing. The state took back our grant. The neighborhood conservation districts was not implemented based on the conversation the boards had. And the board did go through its action item and that was completed. The floor area ratio and the expansion of a non-conforming dwelling by more than fifty percent is still ongoing, ongoing. And updating the subdivision rules and regulations is currently on hold. And is contingent upon finding funding and I'll go into that one in a little bit more. The research of site plan rules and regs, I have pulled together some communities. This goal didn't, didn't go beyond that, you know, the board was to develop a, a list of key elements. So that's something I'll get to in a minute. And I forgot to put, I'll have to put that in the memo, the update to the tree preservation bylaw was done this past town meeting. So starting with the goals for the coming year. As always, I will meet with the building commissioner and Marsha. And we kind of first develop a quick list of some items for the board to think about. That we have just been keeping a list over the past year as things come up. This is usually where a lot of housekeeping items may come up, so that will happen probably at the meetings in August. Possibly the July twenty-seventh meeting. Again, Throw Business Depot, just had that conversation. And moving forward to determine whether the board will want to put forth an amendment to the zoning bylaw and as that moves forward.
Elizabeth, can I stop you for a second? And so do you think we should have something here or is a separate item that says like determine compliance with the MBTA Communities Act?
No, so that's where I will add that along with the comments regarding the commuter rail parking and the existing uses.
Oh, okay. I didn't, sorry, I didn't know that was going in there.
Nope, that's okay. Oh, and for.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, I, I actually, I think maybe it's compliance with the MBTA Act should be its own thing because it, it might be that that has something to do with West Concord. And, and so maybe it should just be a separate item, that, that's all. For your consideration.
But not mine, it's, it's the board's memo, so.
That's my opinion.
That's something that the board wants to do and also to Burton's comment. Clarifying the reasons for the thirty-eight foot height limit. Had that. And then a couple of meetings ago, started the conversation, Haley started the conversation with the board regarding sustainability and green zoning. So we didn't know if there were any other additional items under this action item to go into that. And also as far as the estimating the time for board and the town planner. The board time really depends on how much, you know, whether a board member wants to take this on as a, a project, so similar to what Kate has been doing for the floor area ratio. She has been doing, you know, a very high level of work. So that also needs to be discussed. The shuttle, should the grant funding be opened up again? We will put in for the grant funding again, I'm confident that we would be awarded it again. But the town has the tourism and visitor and tourism director who has now been doing a lot of economic development and working with the business community. So it is likely that she will take over quite a bit of the whole grant and implementation of that grant along with the director and crosstown connect. The standard condition, the board, you know, going back through your action items at some point in the next few months. And six is the additional, what the board discussed tonight, moving forward is and so from the comments, the conversation earlier this evening, I will expand on this section of what the board talked about. For subdivision roles and regs, I received a, a rough quote from the consultant who's currently working with the engineering division on the town's MS four permit, where they have identified various sections of the zoning bylaw that need to be amended so that we are in compliance with MS four requirements. And then also in conversations the board has had previously, there's a lot of other areas of the bylaw that definitely need to be looked at and updated along with the specific section where the board had expressed having town council provide some input on different findings that the board makes. So was able to get a estimate for at least the consultant side, not for, I have not received an estimate for town council side. But currently that funding is not available and would need to be programmed through the capital planning process. So unless funds are found elsewhere, this would not take place until twenty twenty-three. The board has had significant discussions regarding updating the site plan rules and regs as it relates to implementing different sustainability requirements. There's a lot of other characteristics of site plan role, site plans that would be part of rules and regulations. So the first project would be to, I think a good exercise would be to take you know, to take an existing site and let's take three hundred, three ten Baker Ave. Talk about some of the elements that would make it a better site plan or also look at a site where the an existing site where the board feels that it, you know, it was developed well and start to list those different items. And then I can send the board different examples from other communities on how site plan rules and regulations come together, how they look, how they're developed. The town's reviewing agent had recommendations for the preservation, tree preservation bylaw, but also changes to the rules and regs. That would require a public hearing to adopt those. So that can be inserted into the board's timeline for other projects. And then the last item that the board had talked about was following through with that July two thousand and nineteen report that M A P C did and whether to update the parking standards in the zoning bylaw to meet industry standards. That's what I have and then adding the eleventh item would be assessing whether the town currently meets the new MBTA community requirements.
We already do trees lot this past year, Elizabeth.
You did updates to the tree preservation bylaw, which was town meeting. Updates to the tree preservation rules and regulations requires a public hearing.
Got it, thank you. I think this looks great. I have no other comments on what I already interjected about. Communities Act.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I agree. I, I didn't have any, any comments beyond what was, what was previously said.
My only question I think is wondering if just, I know we have sustainability as a general category, but then we've got F A R as a separate subdivision rules and regs as a separate one and then site plan review. Which I think kind of covers what, how we might be addressing sustainability and green zoning. For the most part, so like, I, I don't know if anybody else was, or Elizabeth, what you thought about that, but that's just what struck me. If, if it would feel good to take one off here if we're going to cover it, you know, if we're going to cover it within some of these other ones anyways.
So what I can do is I can basically the items in number three, I can parcel up and put them in those other categories and remove this one.
Sure, um, and then as far as subdivision rules and regs. Understand a lot of other non-sustainability updates need to be done, it sounds like. All of which I know nothing about, but what I obviously do know is that North Hampton has a pretty desirable one from a just strictly sustainability perspective. But is the understanding that there would be no opportunity even to make those particular updates for consideration, even if we could do it, you know, relatively cheaply internally before twenty twenty-three.
There are probably a, a few updates that you, you could do without, you know, hiring a consultant. Without going through North Hampton's piece by piece. Update in the subdivision rules and regulations is similar to proposing a zoning bylaw amendment. You, you have to be able to go through the whole document and look for unintended consequences for the subdivision rules and regs. It's making sure that if you update one particular item in there, it doesn't conflict or with another requirement, making it impossible to do. So somebody ends up having to request a waiver for something else to, to meet the requirement that you just put in. So that's where that holistic approach to updating comes into play. But I'm sure there's some, there's some elements of that could be updated without any difficulty other than you'd have to have a notice public hearing.
Okay.
Which I can add that to, you know, this, just to look for, you know, basically that low hanging fruit updates that could be possible. And I can speak to engineering about that as well.
Yeah, that's kind of where my head is at.
So what specifically I would ask is for just the board to go each, through each one of these and discuss what you think your implementation priority is.
You'd like us to do that now?
So it's, it's my goal that you it being the thirteenth of July, that if there the changes that we talked about, I don't think are significant and I think I would ask either one or two members of the board review the memo after I revise it and if you have the implementation priority already set, then it can be forwarded to the select board, town manager and other boards and committees.
Okay, so let's, let's go through this, I think quickly, we, it's, we've, we've just looked at them all. You want to scroll up just a little bit on so this is the twenty twenty town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. I guess, you know, these are, these are the things that are coming from you, Elizabeth and the building commissioner, these are generally not. Well, I guess you're, you're saying board, board time is high, but implementation priority should be high for these, right? I mean, these are things that are coming up and we want to get them done in the, in the year where they're being presented.
Agreed.
Does anybody disagree with putting that implementation priority at high for that? Okay, Elizabeth. The, the road business district redevelopment, I think certainly the, I, I guess, implementation priority, you know, we've heard some questions raised about the implementation, but I think if the, thinking of this rather as completion of this process. What, whatever the, the final result may be, I think that this should be a high priority, given the amount of time we've put into it. And, and leveraging, you know, M A P C, M A P C while they are still around. I, I would also put this as a, a high priority because we, it's, I think it's something that we want to get done in twenty twenty-one.
I would, I would suggest that it be medium and I especially think that we should prioritize sustainability and green zoning and the F A R stuff above this. Because I think that before we are advocating for more and bigger development, we should make sure we kind of have our ducks in a row on controlling it environmentally. So that's my, that's my thought.
Agree.
I have, I have a request on the sustainability and green zoning, I just thought of this. Someone has mentioned that there's a developer who is doing you know, all electric and everything like that in Concord, could we have that developer come in and discuss how they're doing, what they're doing that other developers aren't, so that we could get some kind of a, a practical understanding of, of what is doable in a successful development?
Elizabeth, you're gonna have to extend that invitation, I think I've burned that bridge.
Oh, I don't know, sorry.
That's Dan, right? Yes, Dan Gainesborough, I am, but I also believe Bentley Builders is, while they haven't started, I believe they are also in the very near future, I'm going to say within the next, a month, going to be starting the construction of an all-electric house as well, so I can just reach out to both of them and.
Is guys gonna be motivated to be honest about, wouldn't they be motivated not to make it seem cost-effective or easy because then we would increase our desire to regulate them and, and mandate that they do that? Increase our desire to regulate them and, and mandate that they do that.
I don't think Dan would. The dad stands whole business.
I don't, sorry, I don't know, Dan, but something like Bentley, it seems like, just.
So Dan Gainesborough was the developer of Riverwalk and Melrun Commons P R Ds. So those are all, those are.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm thinking Bentley.
So Mark White's with Bentley Builders and I, I think the direction that Concord's going, and this is the. Various board members have even commented that. Having a sustainable home and a fossil fuel-free home is something that. Significant number of people who live in Concord or want to move to Concord. Want in their projects or in their homes. And so I think that is starting to become. An incentive for developers as well. So I. But I don't see what, you know, what the harm would be. Having a conversation with him and seeing if he wants to come talk to the board about it.
I see no harm. I would just be aware that. Of conflicts of interest that they may have in their hearts. That's all.
Well, you know, on the other hand, if they feel they've got a competitive advantage in building green buildings because they've adapted it. You know, you, you want, you, you want to raise everybody, you want to require everybody else to meet your standard if you're meeting it, right? Because.
They don't want us to mandate them into doing it where they don't choose to, even if they are doing it in specific places. But I think I totally agree with Linda that let's bring them in here and whoever comes in, we can. Hear what they have to say. So that's great.
For the road business district redevelopment and the implementation priority, is there anything within the requiring regulations? That has a timeline associated with it that we need to comply with, or there's some sort of stick? I mean, I, I don't know that familiar with it. I just don't know. They usually say like within so many years or whatever, you have to do X.
I don't know the date off the top of my head, but I, I.
There's something there.
I, it's, it's a couple of years out. I, I think it actually, it might be 2023, but I'll find out exactly.
But, you know, I, I, I agree with Burton's point. There's been kind of a lot invested in this project, including community education. And I think it is worth, you know, seeing through fruition. And if there are other steps. That we want to take to do community education or research ourselves, I think that's important. We don't have to rush it to. You know, to a fall town meeting, a special meeting, but we, I think it should be on the list of something that we. Conclude this year. But I agree that not everything can be high priority also.
Yeah, I think we should just, I don't know, I'm curious if anyone thinks that a fall town meeting is even possible at this point. Find it impossible.
And I think we were just doing that because we thought that was, M A P C was kind of still with us. Was it? Was that kind of the reasoning with originally thinking about fall town meeting, Elizabeth?
Originally, yes.
And Kate, regarding, you know, we're going to talk about this, about researching the. The MBTA Community Act or whatever the zoning, I mean. I, my understanding is that the zoning actually has to be in place, whether you have a development or not. That's, that's not the intent of the, of the act, I think.
Sorry, I don't understand. I don't understand.
So, so even if there was something that, even if there was multifamily housing within a half mile of one of our train stations. That still doesn't comply with what they're asking, which is that your zoning must allow it.
Oh, yeah, I agree. I agree completely.
Okay, yeah. So I, I guess it's kind of irrelevant whether we, we meet the, the multifamily housing right now. It's good to know. But if we still have to comply with the zoning part, you know, we still have to have that on the list for this year or next year, you know.
Yeah. So my question to Elizabeth was whether the zoning complied in, in West Concord. Cause I, I know of the zoning and around Thorough Depot and just not in West Concord. And it sounds like her response was that, no, it does not comply as it currently existed, existed. I think that was her response, because otherwise I think she was saying that's why it was a special permit to put Brooks side in.
Let's do this. Let's make this the road depot business district a medium. We are going to get this done this year, but it's going to be a medium priority item.
Compromised.
All right. Sustainability and green zoning. I think that this is something, you know, we, we work Kate has been doing on. On the FAR and the like. I think that this is. Yes.
Well, this is going to get embedded in the other ones. So it's by itself, it doesn't need its own priority.
Correct. So number three will be deleted.
Okay. I guess on this one, on the cross town connect shuttle. Elizabeth, I think this is entirely, you know, town staff.
It's either going to be low because it's not going to happen or it'll be high. So. And I would probably change the town planner's time to low, medium. Cause I, at that point, I probably won't be the lead. So. This one will be one of those flex goals depending on what the state does.
Okay. I, I mean, it's this next one, item five. To me, this sounds like a meeting. An agenda item at a meeting.
It is.
Yeah. So. I guess, I mean, the implementation priority. As a metric is a little challenging here, but I, I mean, because I don't want to say low, like we're not, we're going to let it slip off the. But.
It's a meeting that should influence this document, these goals.
Yeah. I, I would put number six at a, are you on five? I, Elizabeth, I, I'm sure we will get this done as a, as a, an agenda item between now and. The end of the, the period covered by this memo.
So we'll make.
High, I think. It's low, low, high, right? Like, should be high. Easy to do and high. Sorry, Elizabeth, we're cutting off.
Oh, I, I, it's, it's a one, it's a one meeting thing. And I would say, you know, you can put it at medium.
Okay.
Number six. With the amendment to incorporate the sustainability discussion. Which I already did.
I mean, this was part of our discussion tonight, right? Around the effectiveness of the zoning of the, of the FAR by law. And potential amendments. Kate, what would you put this at?
Um, well, I think we've actually dropped, I think that. Last year, we thought we should not continue to look at changes in 715. I don't know if you guys agree with that. So I would drop that from here. And I would, I would say, I would make this about. Make, including the incentive for sustainable.
You say that because I thought that the Z B A saw more of those applications.
But. I don't think that we ever developed an idea of that there needed to be a change that was helpful to change to that by law. It seems like, like, quick, Elizabeth, please correct me, but I guess I. What Elizabeth has always said is like a couple of years ago, they really changed the way that they were making their findings to be more restrictive about what they were proving. And so, so it seems like, like what they approve under here for non-conforming lots will fall under the F A R rule, the new rules for F A R. So it seems like that's where we're getting our bang for our buck is by changing the F A R. That's, so I, I would do that. I would drop 715 and then make it high. Obviously, I care, but I mean, like, I care the most about it because I'm totally invested in it.
Or I would change the goal to say, you know, address, you know, home size. If that's what we're trying to do, so that it's kind of a larger, broader goal, and then there might be different ways that we attack it.
Which I think that's at the end, we have preservation of smaller, more diverse housing stock.
Yeah, I agree with Reed, just, just making it a broader approach rather than. Than specific like that.
Making what a broader, like, including something else in this paragraph?
No, I, I'm agreeing with what Kristen was saying.
Like, make the, like, the goal instead of research the effectiveness, you know, and to, to make that. Address housing, housing size, which I, I, I am for smart measurable goals, so I don't like that. Style in general, but it would leave us a little bit of room, whether we end up over the year as we research, you know, these things, you know, how we do that.
So you can, you can, you can change the title of the goal. I mean, it can be just amend 6.2.13.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get away from. I'm, I'm trying to say, you know. You know, proposed by law changes that would. You know, reduce large housing.
But I think we're pretty fixed on FAR unless we're trying to introduce like a.
Then, then that's fine. Then, 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 yes, I think it's fine to. Remove the second part. I wouldn't, I wouldn't. I mean, I guess we can keep it as research effectiveness because we still are doing that, but I think we're actually going to try to take action on this as well this year.
So I'll, I can, I'll just change that to amend.
I mean, the only other thing that I was thinking for mansionization, and I didn't mention this earlier in the meeting where you're talking about F A R, but is. When you just, Elizabeth, when you addressed the goal last year of. Maybe it was two years ago with the consideration of preservation districts. And you said that, you know, it was determined that it really is like a. Something that has to come from the neighbors and not really something from the planning board. I, I still do think that it may be. Worth discussing whether it can be a link on the planning board page. That explains what a preservation district is and how a neighborhood goes about. Establishing it, what the, the steps they would need to take so that when people come, you know, if they have complaints, we can point them to this and say, well, this is an option. And here's how you would, you know, requires you to take action and here's what you would do to start planning. Do you, so I don't know. If Kristen, if you were talking, if you know, that, that was something that potentially would fall into that broader category. But I don't know what you guys think about that. If you want to bring that back at all or not, I'm, I'm not really.
I think our list is so full that I wouldn't necessarily do that. And I don't, I don't know that that addresses it in the same way, but.
And, and. That doesn't need to be on the list. I mean, I can easily just add that to the board's webpage.
Oh, really? Oh. Cool. Good. So let me just bring that up. Next time we talk about FAR, I'll make a note to just, we can talk about that again.
So I think seven would just remain. I'll add the. Part that Haley talked about, just looking into whether there's immediate. Changes that could be made.
I'm happy to take a first run at that, Elizabeth, whatever helps you.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. If you want to be one of the, you want to review the letter after I've done amending it. Usually Burton and then one other member, that would be great.
Oh, no, no, sorry. I meant like the subdivision rules.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I mean, I think even, you know, this year spending time teeing up what, what changes we want a consultant to look into specifically would be helpful. A, a good use of time for this year. And then if there's some we could get to, that's great.
Doesn't, the party in the town is responsible for compliance with the MS four permit. Don't they know what needs to be changed? Well, sorry, but maybe they don't. That's the whole point. It would, like, when you have this estimate of 65 to 80, did somebody say, oh, yeah, I have a list of five things that need to be changed? And so that's how I came up with 65 to 80 or like, because it seems like.
No, 65 to 80 would be to completely overhaul all aspects of. The subdivision rules and regs, not just the MS four requirements.
Okay. Do we know what is required to be MS four compliant?
I haven't gotten that. I have not got that list from, I don't think the consultant for, the engineering division's consultant has provided that final. Draft report yet, but once I receive it, it'll, you know, it'll be sent to the board.
Great, because that seems like it goes hand in hand with, with proposing anything for the, like, that has to do with these other changes for green zoning.
Once again, there may be items. To update to meet the MS four requirements. That then automatically. Require update to some other part of the zoning by law, whether it's with the pavement. And then you get into a whole conversation and the public discussion will, what is appropriate with the pavement for a collector road or. You know, an artillery or, so that's where, where things start to snowball.
Yeah, I understand. I, I guess I just continue to think if we're looking, if we're doing this dive for the purposes of green zoning and that if we are. Then it would be so great to have a list from the engineering department on just even. I'm not assuming that it's simple, just even getting it broken out into what needs to, what's non-compliant, I think would be helpful. But so, yeah, if you could look out for that and be good to see.
So, sorry, just so I understand, Elizabeth, we are waiting to get those requirements and like similar to. The floodplain conservancy that we did this past town meeting, like, is it a requirement that we're just going to like have to. Get that in for passage next year? Or do we have some time on that until 2020?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for required. Compliance with MS four, so I'll have to ask.
If I may, Elizabeth. This. We say right here, it's a high priority in the first sentence. Should the implementation priority remain high? But it's, it's also, anybody who reads it will know it's contingent upon getting it a consultant. You think?
It, it. Well, so how I would probably amend this is that, you know, it. To begin the paragraph with the, the research that needs that Haley talked about. Of whether there are some initial things that can be done immediately. To further sustainability goals, then getting the report from engineering's consultant on the MS four permit. If there are items that can immediately be implemented without having. Consequences elsewhere in the zoning by, in the subdivision rules and regs and implementing those. Could be a high priority, then from there, overhauling the whole entire document. Is contingent upon funding. While it, it's a high priority, it may not, it may not be implemented because of funding constraints. So that's probably, that's how I would recommend wording this section.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Site plan rules and regs.
Is this one that, can we do this? Or do we need a consultant to do this?
I'm, 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 I'm not sure. There's. just like the subdivision rules and regs, there's a lot of really good examples out there and I I think the board has a really good working knowledge of what makes a good site plan. I think that enters into your conversations every time you review an application. So I I think the board is capable of of developing a list of things that you feel make a good site plan. Begin to put that into a document and begin to refine something. Do I think you could do this between in the next year, given everything else? Probably not, but I I think it's definitely something that the board could do in-house.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also happy to, again, if we can use Northampton or others similarly. Uh, like, we always try to and just copy what they have if we think it's good, think it's worth a shot.
Great. So I I would probably put this at a, you know, a medium. You know, a medium priority since it, you know, it'll it won't be done in the next six months.
Is this also something we could get like, it's still as I'm getting myself up on low impact development, especially like understand that N R C has a strong impact in that area as well and it both relate to site plan review. And so how could we leverage them or work with them on that something like this?
I can, yeah, I can have that conversation with Delia.
Happy to get Gary involved.
Yeah, he's done with two, two, two nine Main Street. And take on another project.
That's interesting. I mean, especially with even the lighting, my understanding from him is recommending lower lighting at see the C C C proposal for turtle reasons, which I, you know, never heard of such a thing, but um, you know, there's a connection, obviously, even between lighting and N R C, which I never realized.
Well, if anybody sees any fire fireflies in their backyard anymore, then you would definitely know there's a connection.
I do. Um, let's put this one at medium. And and we go to nine. All right. So we now have a with land agent. We made the changes to the tree by law. This, so this is again to do further changes based on this feedback.
Since this only requires public hearing and not town meeting approval, I would probably put this at low to medium and you'll you'll get it done within, um, you know, this next fiscal year, but likely not within the next six months.
Yeah, I I I would, let's put this at low. I don't think we've even, is this, this is our first low. You gotta have some balance. And anybody object to that? Okay, let's move on to ten, a parking update requirements. So the, this would be developed recommendation, so we're not talking about actually making updates to parking requirements and the zoning code as part of this action. Or you are, or would we, would we be generating what proposed amen zoning code amendments for twenty twenty two?
So the the purpose of the July two thousand and nineteen report that M A P C did was specifically to help the board propose zoning by law amendments.
I I think parking comes before us so often that I I think it's important to address. I just know that we have very so many things on this list right now.
Yeah, well, and this also very much ties into the discussion around around the through our depot.
Well, it also has a discussion around sustainability and impervious surfaces and so, I mean, I don't have an issue taking this off the list as the board moves forward and looks at all the other requirements. And there definitely needs to be a education of quite a large sector of the community on parking and what is perceived and what is actual. So, so maybe it's changing this one to not necessarily go so far as making amendments to the parking requirements, but maybe changing this to just be an education piece on, you know, what came out of this report and the industry standards and educating why there is a difference between what people perceive and what is actually required.
You know, I I think that, so we, I I I don't know why I don't remember this report. But I think so much of what we hear around parking is objections to providing parking relief for some of the proposals we've considered recently. And and so if we were modifying the parking requirements, you know, so that it isn't, it it's, it's brought into the twenty first century. Maybe we we would spend less time talking about parking on every proposal. So I, 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 I I don't know, this is, this is a little bit of an issue for me, but I would, I would want to. I mean, we have a report from twenty nineteen, it's not getting any younger or up to date. Um, I would suggest we make this a priority and I I it's this in my mind is more important than several of the other items on the list.
Yep, I agree with that. The spillover and and everything else, I think it makes sense to to tackle it.
And I also can't recall this report, so if we can, Elizabeth, recirculate it, whatever it was, an email, whatever.
And then the last one was the addition of the M B T A community. Analysis.
I don't think it says in the statute, like, by what time we have to comply without being penalized. But I assume that we need to get right on it and so that we're not penalized. Uh, and by the way, I asked Elizabeth yesterday, other board members, whether Concord was recipients of some of the funding that would, would Concord would not be eligible for if we didn't meet the new zoning requirement there. Um, and she, and Elizabeth, you were kind of off the top of your head, you knew that at least one or maybe two of the funds were something that conquered was either now recipient of or had been in the past, so just FYI. So I think it's high.
But I will find out exactly what grant funds we have received. Because I may, there's certain ident, there's certain funding programs identified in the M B T A community requirement. And so whether something's a mass works or complete streets, whether there are so many different state grant programs and, you know, whether they're structured under one heading or they're different, so I'll find out, find out that. Do you want that to be low, medium, high?
Um, I think it's high because we're not sure if we'll be penalized if we're not, I I mean, unless we want to find out what the implementation timeframe is, but I mean, just kind of assume it's within the next year. I don't know.
I I think it's twenty twenty three, but.
I mean, this passed in twenty twenty, I I can't imagine they're expecting people to get their zoning code changed through town meeting process.
That would be nice, but yeah, I I agree. It is probably pretty generous.
Okay, so never mind. So it's not high, so.
If it's twenty twenty three, I'll put medium. If it's twenty twenty two, I'll put high. Twenty twenty five, I'll put low.
And we have to understand it in the context of throw depot, so throw depot is medium, probably makes sense for us to be medium.
Okay. So I'll make those changes and send it off to Burton um, for review.
Thank you.
I'll try and, I'll try and get that done tomorrow.
All right, don't let it impinge on your vacation.
Oh, no.
Well deserved.
It definitely won't.
Okay. I think, did, did we get draft meeting minutes? I I saw a couple.
Not.
All right, um, any planning board liaison?
You have one more item. That you have to do.
Oh, the registry of deeds. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, so um, I'd make a motion to authorize the chair, vice chair, clerk Department of Public.
D P L M.
D P L M Director and Town Planner to execute certify and endorse approval of plans presented to the board pursuant to chapter forty one and related certificates, releases and other instruments. And any of said persons are authorized to act alone under this authority. All right, go around the room. Nathan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Kristen.
Yes.
Haley.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you all.
For that one, um, there's actually two sheets that everybody has to actually sign their signature to.
Yeah.
And the Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk actually have to sign twice. So, um, those are printed and they will be with Nancy. And if you can just send Nancy an email saying when you can come by and sign those. And and if you can't and also if you can include Nancy and Heather Carey, and I'll send both their email addresses out to everybody. Letting them know when you can come in. Whether it's four nine or after three, that's our public hours now. Usually somebody's there from eight to four thirty.
Wait, I'm sorry, you said everybody, or do you mean just myself, Nathan?
Nope, every, every board member has to sign. And the Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk have to sign. There's two places where you.
When, when does it have to be done by?
It it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be done. I mean, I'm going to say within the next few weeks.
Oh, I was just thinking, we're going to have an in-person meeting relatively soon, right? Maybe. undecided.
Oh, for July twenty seventh?
Is that going to be in person for us?
I don't think we've decided that.
Just didn't know if that would be too late to sign, since we'll all be there.
No, I don't. I mean, I don't think so. That won't be too late.
Then let's tentatively plan on that. And if we look at the agenda and it's something like tonight's where it doesn't make sense to for it to be our first in-person meeting back. We'll go ahead and have people drive past Kaiser Road. Get that done.
Great.
We don't have meeting minutes and any planning board or town planner updates.
Nothing from me.
These on updates, I meant to say. Okay, general public comment for any people hanging on. If you have any comment, please raise your hand. I don't think we have anybody who's dialed in on the phone, so please raise your hand. And if not, we will adjourn. Going, going. Oh, I'm sorry, Linda.
That's all right. Hard to see me. So, good night, everyone. I just want to let you know that I will now be your liaison for this coming year and I'm looking forward to it and enjoy your meetings always and because I've attended most of them throughout the year anyway, previously. Uh, I always learn a lot and the hour catches my attention. Hope this isn't a precedent for the rest of the year.
No, Linda, it's my goal to keep these a little shorter and I'm morose about the fact that it's eleven eleven. Yeah.
You all have great stamina.
Yeah, thank you. And that we're glad to have you as our liaison. So that's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I see Pamela Drit has her hand raised. Pamela.
Hi, Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green, Unit Four. This is a question. In order to get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, must the applicant meet all of the requirements?
That's a hypothetical question that I'm not quite clear. There there are certain requirements and with regard to issuance of special permits by either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. And some of them can be waived based upon conditions.
Okay. Can can the word harm to the community be used to allow environmental harms, which are actual harms, to be a deterrent for a special permit? Since we don't have the right to deny because of air quality, we can deny because of the harm of bad air quality and the removal of of the trees that clean it, can we not?
Well, that's, again, that's a hypothetical, and I think that there are cases where when you're talking about air quality, there will be times when you run into federal preemption. And then there will be times when you have something that is more characterized by, you know, an impact on neighborhood and and character, which is, it's, it's the the language it's typically used in our zoning code. And in that respect, there could be things that happen in the air which have an impact which can can can, and I think in the past have been taken into account by the planning board. But I don't think it's possible to be more specific than that without a, without a, with an app, without an application or a fact pattern in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
I I would encourage you, I am sure you've done this, Pamela, but you know, go, go through the zoning code and you can see the areas where discretion and and consideration of factors that are, you know, impacts on on areas adjacent to a project are can be factors that can be taken into account and and the, the 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 discretion that either the Z B A or the planning board have. It's interesting. All right, thank you. Thank you, as always. All right, with that, I think I'd like to adjourn the meeting. It's only eleven fourteen and thank you all for hanging in there.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Have a great vacation.
I have a great vacation.